Good evening, everyone. Hello, welcome to town meeting. Just wanted to take a moment to do a couple admin notes for you and to just thank some people who put this together. So I appreciate all of the boards and committees and other volunteers who participated in our open house. They are looking for people to volunteer for our community positions. We need the talent that's in this room. You obviously care about the town enough to come to town meeting. So if you are interested in serving in any capacity, small or big, we could use your help on many of the boards and committees. I'd also like to thank our staff, the town staff, who works for months and months and months to put together the information and items that are necessary for this town meeting. We have a great staff. You see them here in the bleachers and they're also residents as well. So I'd like to thank them very much for all the effort they put in. Just to walk through some of the documents you have. So the town meeting warrant was mailed. If you brought yours, thank you. You saved some paper. If you need one, there are extra copies over here. And also the very colorful packet. I just want to show you what you have in terms of information. So the white piece of paper on the front is Wi-Fi, which you have, thanks to the school's access to. They gave us this password so you could use that tonight. The town website, hubbardstonma.us, has a red banner on the top that has every town meeting document on it, if you prefer electronic documents. The green sheet. So the green sheet is explanation. So the most common question we get at town meeting is, "What is it that you just said when you read that motion?" This is attempting to answer that. One or two sentences that will allow you to see what that motion was. So if you want to reference the motion before we read it in the article, it'll explain it for you. The purple sheet is in reference to Warren Article 22, which is the override question for a road stabilization fund. It provides additional information on what's being considered for additional road maintenance and support, if that was to be supported. And the last page, the orange sheet, is a copy of the bylaw. You'll hear during the stretch code bylaw presentation in Warren Article as made available at town meeting. This orange sheet is being made available for you to read for that particular bylaw Allow me just one more, one more brief minute. I just wanted to acknowledge one of our Board of Selectmen, Michael Stotter, who served for nine years on the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to just thank him for his service to the community. That's a long time. That's a lot of meetings. That's a lot of time away from your family. I really appreciate. You'll hear from him in a little bit, but just wanted to publicly thank him for his service to the community. Don't want to do one more time? So my boss just told me, I'm Ryan McLean, by the way. I'm the town administrator. I've met many of you. I appreciate everyone's support as I take on this role. If I haven't met you yet, I'd like to, and to hear, you know, what you like about the town, what you'd like to improve. That's the best way to do things. I'll come to you, meet you anywhere, discuss anything you want to talk about in terms of Hubbardston. And I appreciate you allowing me to be in your community. It's the best job I've ever had. You don't have to clap for that. So lastly, and I'll stop talking, I promise, just want to recognize one more town official, Ms. Joyce Green, our town clerk, is a quitter. She's retiring. She started in 2006. As an elected official here, was appointed town clerk when it became a appointed position with the charter in 2013, has served in the town clerk role for 13 years. I would know nothing about my current job if I wasn't able to go to her every day and ask. Everyone on the town staff feels the loss of her retiring because of not only her knowledge, but her concern about the community. I've met a lot of people in municipal government and met very few who care so much about doing a great job because they care so much about their town. I know a lot of you know this, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Joyce in her last town meeting in official capacity for her service to the community. So like professional athletes, she will tour the town to say goodbye in many different goodbye ceremonies for the next month. But here at town meeting, we just wanted to, as a staff, offer our appreciation in her second home, which is town meeting, for all the service she's done to the community. So if you'll join me up here, we have a very small gift. Says Hubbardston Town Clerk, 2006 to 2019. And staff and everything signed it to wish her well. She's not going to be paying attention to meeting while she's reading this. Just wanted to, again, thank, there's no way to thank you for everything you've done for the town, so we're just trying the best we can. So thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce Joyce Green.
Well, thank you, everybody. That was very humbling. Thank you. So I see a quorum is present, and I will now call the meeting to order at 7:10 PM. Since the moderator is absent tonight, our first order of business will be to elect by ballot a temporary moderator. This is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 14, which I won't miss. And the temporary moderator will preside over this town meeting. It's my understanding that Renee Lafayette, who is also a candidate for moderator on next week's annual town election ballot, has graciously offered to perform the duties of moderator tonight. And you should be aware that in an election, the person receiving the majority of votes, of course, is declared the winner. So accordingly, if there is only one person nominated tonight, only one vote will be required to elect that moderator. If there is more than one person nominated tonight, we will need to vote by ballot, which will require each voter to fill out a piece of paper with the person's name on it for whom they wish to vote. Then they will need to come up front and cast your ballots, and then they will be read and recorded by myself, the town clerk. And you can believe that this might take a bit of time, so consider that. But if only one nomination is received, then only one vote will be required to elect the nominee, the temporary moderator. So do I hear a nomination for Renee Lafayette to act as temporary moderator for the purposes of this meeting? Okay, we have a nomination made by Dan Galant. Do we have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Second by Barbara Hubbard. Are there any additional nominations? Seeing none, I will declare that the nominations are closed and that Renee Lafayette is the sole nominee for the position of temporary moderator for this meeting. Do I hear a motion that the Chair of the Board of the Selectmen cast one ballot for Renee Lafayette? Mr. Robert Hubbard. And is there a second to that motion? Second by Michael Stotter. Can I spell your name? And I'd ask that you cast one ballot. And we have one ballot cast for Renee Lafayette, who I declare the temporary moderator for this evening's meeting. Come on up.
I hope I won't be known as Landslide Lafayette for the rest of my tenure as moderator, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve our town in this capacity as moderator. I am at once humbled, and I certainly view it as a privilege. So thank you, my fellow townsman. At this point in time, the Chair is going to appoint as counters Bella Caldera and Dennis O'Donnell. Thank you, both. And Mr. Gerard, it's my understanding that you're going to be moving that the town hear the reports of the town officers and committees and act thereon. Is that correct? It is. Motion by Mr. Gerard. Do I hear a second? Duly seconded. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, raising, yes. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. At this point, the Chair would like to recognize Mr. Michael Stotter, the Board of Selectmen Vice Chair, who will deliver the state of the town report.
Thank you, Mr. Lafayette. Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Stotter, a member of the Board of Selectmen. On behalf of our board and the Finance Committee, I'd like to welcome everyone to Hubbardston's 252nd Annual Town Meeting. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule tonight to be part of this important meeting, which sets our spending, our policies, and our initiatives for the next year. I'd like to echo what Ryan said, and on behalf of the board, like to thank Joyce Green. Obviously, Joyce is retiring at the end of the month after 13 years as our town clerk. And as any one of us can attest, Joyce is a consummate professional. She's always friendly, extremely knowledgeable, and all around a superb person and a superb town clerk. We're all very lucky to have her here and appreciate that we've had you in the office for 13 years, Joyce. I'd also like to thank the tremendous work by all of our town employees, from our office staff to our firefighters, to our police officers and our DPW workers. They work hard to pay the bills and keep our lights on. They work to keep us safe and respond at any hour of the day. They're called on to help us sometimes in our darkest hours and all with very little recognition. Thank you for your dedication and service to the town. And thanks to all the volunteer boards and committees whose work many times behind the scenes is vitally important to the functioning and future of Hubbardston. Now for some town updates. I'd like to start by highlighting some of the roads. We recently completed paving the southern portion of Route 68. The repaving of the northern section of Route 68 north of the town center is set to begin later this summer, with all the work finishing up in the spring of 2020. Our town center committee has been working diligently to finalize plans for the reconstruction of the town center area. This project is scheduled for 2023, but may happen as soon as 2021, if all the stars align right. All three of these projects have and will be using millions of dollars of state and federal funds to complete, with the town only being responsible for drafting engineering plans. We have two bridge replacements scheduled for Williamsville Road and Ragged Hill Road this construction season. The bridge on Evergreen Road and the culvert on Route 62 over the Ware River are scheduled for next season. Continuing on the subject of roads, since 2013, we have spent almost $9 million on road repair and reconstruction. This is a combination of town monies and state grant funding. Sadly, there are still millions of dollars of road work left to do, as many of us can attest to. For too many years, Hubbardston did not invest adequately in roads, and although we have been aggressive in our schedule to repair them over the last six years, we are still many millions of dollars behind. In order to accelerate the process of road repair, we have placed a plan on the warrant tonight to use an override and road stabilization fund to get needed funding to accelerate the pace and number of roads we can reclaim and repair. Also on the subject of roads, you will see articles detailing the acceptance of street or road as a public road. Our budget this year is thoughtful and relatively lean. Overall, we have suggested a small increase over last year, mostly accounting for contractual wage increases, material cost increases, and school budget increases. I'm sure there will be much discussion on the school budget tonight. Hubbardston has been assessed an 8% increase in our school budget. Our administrative and financial team feel strongly we can afford a 5% increase without negatively impacting the already limited services Hubbardston can afford our residents. Schools account for 60% of our budget this year. Assessment increases of 5% or 8% are not $5,000 or $10,000 increases. These increases amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars. As a town, we can only raise taxes by 2.5% per year. When 60% of our budget increases by 8%, those several hundred thousand dollars have to get pulled from the remainder of the budget. The remainder of the budget is the part which funds all other town operations and services, which are also funded by our taxes. Before we start the school funding conversation later tonight, I want everyone to remember this is not the town against the school, or the school against the town. Quabbin has dedicated professionals trying to do the best for all of our kids. Every single member of the Board of Selectmen has children in the Quabbin School District. It's our own selfish interest to get the absolute best for our children. The failure of school funding in reality is a failure at the state level. There are amendments and bills which are continually stalled and passed over at the State House level, which would address the worsening funding gap of regional and rural school districts. Our legislature continues to talk about fixing the problem, but sadly, that's all they've ever done is talk. The broken foundation funding formula sees education money preferentially shunted to the eastern, already more wealthy, part of the state, while the central and western Massachusetts school districts are left with scraps. Pusher legislatures, because without involvement of the State House, the school funding divide will only continue to get worse every year and every year after that. Nevertheless, tonight, there is no State House fix, and we have a gap between what the school district has assessed and what we feel we can fund without cuts to services. I'm sure there'll be a healthy debate later on tonight. In other updates, our new library roof is taking shape and should be done by the end of the month. We are regionalizing our accounting department with Templeton and recently regionalized our building department with Gardner. Our planning board continues to work on an update to the master plan. And our celebration committee, led by Katie Young, continues to expand their participation and outreach of community events. Finally, I'd like to thank my fellow citizens in Hubbardston for allowing me to serve on this board for the last nine years. I'm retiring from the board after my term ends this week, and it truly has been an honor. I've met some really incredible people over the years. And while I've learned a lot about municipal government and finances, the greatest asset I've obtained from this experience is a greater sense and appreciation of what makes a community. I encourage everyone here to volunteer at some level. There are many positions in town government which could use your talent and experience. But if you don't have a desire for government work, volunteer at the PTO, with the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the United Way, Boys and Girls Club, or local food bank. Whatever your interests, I'm sure there's an organization in desperate need of your help. The more of us who volunteer our time and talents, the better community we become. Thank you, and have a good meeting.
And again, thank you for your service to our town. Article 3, my, the, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All right. I thought we had one on two as well. Motion as far as the second article. My understanding was that it was going to be moved by Mr. Gerard and seconded by the Chair or Mr. Williams. Okay. Any further discussion as far as the report of town officers and committees? The Chair hears none. The Chair hears none. All in favor, please raise your card. Those opposed, thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the motion passes. Thank you. Article 3, the Chair understands that Mr. Haddad moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter agreements with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Haddad. Do I hear a second? Duly seconded by Mr. Stotter and others, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. If there's anyone, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this motion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the motion passes. Article 4, the Chair understands Mr. Stotter moves that the town accept educational grants and aid for fiscal year 2020 to be expended for authorized purposes by the Massachusetts Regional Vocational Technical School and the Quabbin Regional School District. Is there a second? Duly seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion? Is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your cards, and the motion passes. Two things that the Chair should note. The first is, if you have your cell phone on, if you could please switch it to either vibrate or off at this point. And then the second point is just that as far as this evening, if you do want to address the town meeting, please come to either of the two microphones up in front. Thank you. Yes, because this will all be videoed, correct? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Article 5, Mr. Galant moves that the town authorize the continuation of the Holden Hospital Account, number 220-512-558000000, for fiscal year 2020 to be used for the purposes specified in the trust fund settlement. Motion by Mr. Galant. Is there a second? Duly seconded. Is for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your cards, and the motion passes. Next, there will be a procedural motion. Mr. Williams moves that Article 32 and 33 be taken out of order at this time. This requires a two-thirds vote to take the articles out of order per the town's general bylaws. Motion by Mr. Williams. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stotter. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this motion? The Chair will recognize the town administrator.
Just for the purposes of understanding, this is being taken out of order in order to address the PEG Reserve for Appropriation Account, Article 32, and its appropriation. If it does pass and it is successful, we would like to amend the bylaw so that everything is very clean, which is Articles 6 and 7. So it's being taken out of order so that if it does pass and it's successful, we can address it fully in the coming articles.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the motion passes. Thank you. Article 6, Mr. Gerard, sorry, 32. Thank you. Article 32, Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53-F3/4, establishing a separate revenue fund effective fiscal year 2020, which begins on July 1, 2020, to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which shall be deposited cable television license proceeds and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support public, educational, and governmental PEG access cable television services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreements. And upon such establishment, that the town vote to transfer the balance of all funds as of June 30, 2019, held in the PEG Access revolving account for the benefit of the Cable Advisory Committee to said PEG Access Cable Related Fund. Does the Chair hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Stotter. For the purposes, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee took no action for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this motion? Mr. Galant? And ma'am, are you a resident? Town and county, go ahead, please. so it should be the fiscal year, which begins on July 1, 2019. So instead of 2020, which is printed in the warrant, it should be 2019. Okay. Motion by Mr. Galant, seconded by Mr. Williams, that that be amended from 2020 to 2019. Does everyone understand what the amendment is? Okay, so just a typo here. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, please show your card. Thank you. Those opposed? And passes, the amendment passes unanimously. Back to the article as amended. Is there any further discussion to the article as amended? All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the article as amended passes unanimously. Article 33, Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $85,000 and no, $30,000 now, okay. Sorry about that. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 and no cents for the salaries, benefits, committee stipends, and other operating expenses of the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2020, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of $30,000 be transferred from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gerard and Mr. Galant. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Okay, I'm sorry. If you can come, sorry about that.
I apologize. I'm a little confused. Do we already have this money, the $30,000?
So if you could just state your name.
Do we already have this $30,000?
I'll answer. We just need your name.
Susan Braggy.
So for the last two articles, so what's happening here is the state came out with a change to the way we do things. So normally, our cable access fund was funded through what's called a revolving account, money in and money out. What this account does is it reserves money. So money comes in from the state and is reserved in this account for appropriation, meaning that it's held here. So we'll still continue to get money, and we do have money in that account. What this article is doing is saying that now the cable... and is reserved in this account for appropriation, meaning that it's held here. So we'll still continue to get money and we do have money in that account. What this article is doing is saying that now the Cable Committee can appropriate it and use it. So money will continue to come into the account that was created in thirty-two. The Cable Committee will be allowed to spend up to this appropriation this year, this fiscal year and beyond. So, yes.
So, my question is, so the state gives us this money and it's an appro-
Comes from the cable companies, but yes.
Okay, so that's what my question was. Where does the money come from? It comes from Charter? Or Spectrum, or whatever?
So it's a fee that's charged and then given to the town for the service?
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Any further discussion to the, to the motion? All, if not, all in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And motion passes unanimously. We're now going to be considering Article six. Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaw, Chapter four and Section six E, entitled Departmental Revolving Funds as printed in the warrant, and to transfer the balance of all funds in the quote "vaccine administration account" unquote revolving fund as of June thirtieth, 2019, into the quote "board of health fund" unquote. And further, to amend the town's general bylaw, Chapter four, Section six E, entitled Department Revolving Funds, by striking from Section E the PEG Access Revolving Fund under the authorization of the Cable Advisory Committee, into which is deposited license fees from cable television providers, expended for the purpose of recording and broadcasting town meetings, events, and other cable access expenses. Is there a second? So moved by Mr. Gerard and seconded, okay? Okay, by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And article passes unanimously. Article seven, Mr. Hadad moves that the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2020 spending limits for the revolving funds established in Chapter four of the Harpiston General Bylaws in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. A, by striking the references to and spending limits for the gas fund and plumbing fund pursuant to the vote under Article six. B, by correcting the name of the Temporary Driveway Permit Fund to the DPW Temporary Driveway Fund. C, by changing the name of the Vaccine Administration Account to the Board of Health Fund, pursuant to the vote in Article six, and further to increase the annual spending limit for this fund to ten thousand dollars. And D, by striking the reference to and spending limit for the PEG Access Fund. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Galant. Galant. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would wish to speak to this motion? If you can please give us your name.
Sure. Laura Foley, twelve Pitcherville Road. I'm very confused because the, what you have read does not appear in the article. Can you please clarify what you're reading and why it's different?
Sure. The Chair recognizes the town administrator.
So that's a good question. So the warrant is printed to frame the article. Okay, the motion is what is used for legal purposes. So the motion is saying what is being done here at town meeting. So for the purposes of speeding things up and clarifying, the motion is what we need to do legally. The warrant is what gives the information, but it is the motion that passes. So what we're doing is what's being read by the moderator.
And thank you for asking the question. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. And again, if you can please give your name and your address.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Heather Perjery Woods. I'm at fifty-nine Grimes Road. So on Article seven, I just have two clarification questions. So the two bold numbers for the grave fund for the cemetery commission and the planning board fund for the planning board. So the new limits for FY twenty, they're suggesting that they're being changed to ten thousand and twenty? Can you tell us what they were for FY nineteen? And if we thought they, these numbers are going up or going down?
Five thousand and ten thousand respectively.
So currently, the grave fund was five thousand, it's going up to ten, and the planning board was ten, and it's going up to twenty? Is there a reason for it to go up to twenty? Is there more stuff coming through?
Ms. McLean?
So, looking back at expenditures in the, in the last few years, doing a look back, it's creeping up over the spending limit. So we're doubling the spending limit to accommodate what we think is increased expenses in those accounts.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Tom Robinson, Brigham Street. I have a process question. When this warrant gets published with a set of words and numbers and whatever it is, I thought that kind of froze it. And when we came to other town meetings, if we wanted to change it, we of course can change it, but it requires a vote of the floor to make the changes. Maybe I don't understand that process, or it's no longer valid or something. But it seems like we're doing something differently tonight. We get this thing at home, we read it, and then we come here and we hear a very differently worded motion read. So I just need a quick explanation of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. The Chair recognizes town council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carolyn Murray, Town Council. To answer the question, and the town administrator alluded to this under a prior explanation. The warrant article sets the outer boundaries and put is, has to provide you folks with enough notice of things that are going to be discussed at this meeting. The motion can differ from that article. It can't differ tremendously. It has to be within the scope of the article, but the motion can indeed differ from the article. What you, what counts, to use the town administrator's words, legally, is the motion that is made by town meeting. So as long as the motion is within the scope of the article, it's properly before you, and any amendments can be made from the floor.
So in fact, the, the motion, the motion before us is, as far as, as far as Article six. Exactly. So essentially, what was, what was read, what was read just a couple of moments ago is in the form of an amendment. Is that correct, counselor? Essentially, or a substitute motion? Okay. Any, anyone else? Yes, 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 absolutely. So, I'm just going to read it again, please. Mr. Adad moves that the town fix, vote to fix the fiscal year 2020 spending limits for the revolving funds established in Chapter four of the Harpiston General Bylaws in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. So these are amendments. And the first one is, A, by striking the reference to and spending limits for the gas fund and plumbing fund pursuant to the vote under Article six. B, by correcting the name of the Temporary Driveway Permit Fund to the DPW Temporary Driveway Fund. C, by changing the name of the Vaccine Administration Account to the Board of Health Fund pursuant to the vote in Article six, and further to increase the annual spending limits for this fund to ten thousand dollars. And D, by striking the reference to and spending limit for the PEG Access Fund. Correct? Okay. Sure. Sure, Ms. McLean.
So I, I see this needs a little bit more clarification. So the reason for these changes is, when the warrant is printed, we can't assume that Article six would pass. So in Article six, you did many of these things, which is, you took away the gas fund and the plumbing funds. The Temporary Driveway Permit Fund needs to be changed in name so it matches what we have in accounting. The Board of Health Fund was made from the vaccine account in Article six. And then we talked about the PEG Access Fund. So what this article is doing is cleaning up all the bylaws to make sure it matches what we're doing. So the reason why it's amended through a motion is so that we can accomplish things that were done tonight, but that we couldn't assume were going to be done tonight in Article six. If you'd voted down, we wouldn't have done any of these things.
Is that some way of your, for, for your?
What I just said?
Yeah. I don't think that's right. I think there are. We, we always have it, we'll come up with something and add to the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Right. So Article six, in fact, set some of these amendments in place. Right? Is that correct? Please, your name and your address.
Bella Caldera, twelve Salmon Hill Road.
Thank you.
And my husband, Raven, is on the cemetery commission, and he couldn't be here tonight due to a tragic accident, though he's mending. And I know that he would approve of the increase in the graves fund, especially if it provides more funds for graveyard maintenance. I have participated with others who are here in doing work to write gravestones, mend gravestones, clean gravestones, but there's still much to be done. So I will tell him, if this passes, that we've doubled the graves fund, and I know that he will approve. The dead of Harpiston are our history, and we need to maintain the cemeteries.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to discuss this motion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, ma'am. If you can please come up to either of the microphones.
Anethol, eighty-seven Garnet Road. All right, I'm just a little confused that the other funds that were increased are in bold. But why is not the Vaccine Administration Assistant in bold? It says up there it went from ten. Thank you. And in, and here it says five.
Ms. McLean?
So these, these are all good questions. So it was done in Article six? So we couldn't assume when it was printed that it would be approved in Article six? So Article six sent, set that spending limit at ten thousand through the motion that was read in Article six. So this is cleaning that up in the bylaw and matching what was voted in Article six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else as far as discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Hansgate, Wayansville Road, Chairman of the Board of Health. The Immunization Vaccine Fund has been very restrictive and is in outdated form. And that's why we put the warrant forward to ask for it to be in a revolving account so that it can be used if we get a measles outbreak or if the town needs more Narcan or things of that nature that are still very vital, but more up to date to the health issues that we currently have. So that's why it's there and that's why the amounts are now changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the article, please raise your card. Those opposed, thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you. And the article passes. Okay. Article eight, Mr. Stoddard moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the following sums of money to meet the salaries and compensation of town employees and town officers as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, and for the expenses and outlays of the town departments, including the incremental cost of the first year of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Harpiston Professional Firefighters, Local four nine five seven I A F F, effective July one, 2019, and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2020 as printed in Appendix A to the warrant, and that the sum of one hundred thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for the purpose of partially funding the FY 2020 operating budget, thereby reducing the amount to be raised by taxation, and further to accept and expand federal and state funds to offset certain salaries or expenses and outlays. Okay, thank you. And seconded by Mr. Galant. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this motion? So the Chair recognizes the town administrator for the purposes of his budget presentation.
Okay, good evening. So Article eight is the, the budget, the budget article. So I wanted to give a brief presentation on the budget process and what we're looking at in this budget. To include what you heard in the motion, the inclusion of free cash. The reason why that's included in the motion is so it's very clear when we report to the state where all of our sources of revenue are coming, so we can properly run our budget. So this year's budget process included a recommendation through the charter process by me, which then goes to the Finance Committee for their, for their revisions and their commentary and their willingness to dig into the budget. And then it goes in front of the Board of Selectmen and is approved as a, as a combined recommended budget if the process goes that way. So this presentation I'm giving to you is that combined recommended budget. So the idea behind this budget was to put everything into context. So five-year picture in order to solve some problems. So the town does have some budget problems. One, there's a structural deficit in the budget, meaning we have more expenses than our revenues can afford. And one of the ways that we're able to cover that gap is through unexpected revenues that came in, and I'll get into that a little bit. But also, we use free cash, and that's been done for the last few years. It's not best practice. So what free cash is, is generated in two ways. It's generated by not spending as much as you said you were going to or by getting more money in than you said you were going to, right? That generates free cash. When you use that as a one-time revenue, meaning when you use it for something that happens over and over again, it's not best practice. Okay, also, we've been maxing out our revenue projections, meaning that we say we're going to get exactly what we got the year before. So the problem with that is if you don't, you have a shortfall, right? So you want to be conservative with your revenue estimates. Not so conservative that you don't have enough to do your operating and run your town, but not so aggressive that you run into a situation where you have to come back to the town and ask for more money. So in order to, to fix these budget problems, we wanted to put things into a five-year picture and try and address some of these problems rather than just stick our head in the sand and say, we'll figure that out another day. So one of the ways that that's done is through policy and procedure. So it's been a strict adherence to published policies and procedures in order to get a hold of the budget and try and fix some of these structural problems. We also put in strong fiscal controls, and I'll give my staff full credit here. They're spending what they're saying they're going to spend and no more, which allows us to make sure that what we're telling you is what's actually being spent. We're also trying to control growth. So rather than just ask for whatever it is that we want, we're only asking for those things that we absolutely need to provide the services that you demand. And if it goes outside of that bounds, we're coming to you and asking you and showing to you what that is. And lastly, we're trying to make smart decisions about where we invest our money. So here are some of the budget goals. I know this is difficult to see, but we're trying to get our stabilization reserves to a level that the state is recommending and that our people who judge our financial standing say is good, so we can have a good credit rating. So we're trying to build up those funds, not so heavy that we're just hiding money and stuffing it away, but enough to where we're supposed to be. So those are five percent for stabilization. So that means- So that means in a year where everything went downhill, we'd have enough to cover it. Also, enough in our capital, so that if we don't generate any free cash, our capital stabilization, we can still buy the things we need to run the town. Okay, other things we're trying to control with our goals are debt, how much we spend, and how we project those revenues, as I talked to you before. Next slide. Okay, here are some highlights. Been living this world for a little bit, so I don't need to look back here. Some of the highlights of this budget. There's a problem in our police department in that we don't have enough money to fund all the shifts that residents believe we should. So in order to make sure that we don't overspend with our police department, we are cutting some shifts down to one officer per shift by not filling vacant shifts. So this allows us to not spend as much money, but as you can imagine, endangers our police officers and doesn't provide a level of service that we think we should. So the increase in the police budget addresses that. We want to get back to what we think the patrolling should be, community policing levels that are reasonable in order to protect our officers and our town. On the fire side, the increase you see fully funds the paramedic that this town voted for last year, and also does the contractual raises that we negotiated with the union. Reasonable negotiation with the union. The union really saw that we have a structural deficit and worked with us, and we appreciate that the growth control there is enough to thank our employees, but also not sink our budget. Okay, the DPW, there's a little bit of extra money for road maintenance. So we are out of road materials right now. We can't fill the potholes because we don't have any materials. We also can't fix the culverts in preparation for the Chapter Ninety projects that we want to do this summer. If we were able to do that, everything would happen faster, we'd have better roads. So we're investing just a little bit of money to try and fix that problem. Talking 10,000 here, not a massive amount of money, but enough to get the materials we need to fill some of those potholes. And we've also invested a little bit in our town staff. So any of you who have been to Town Hall know that we've had a lot of turnover in the last few years. It's because we don't pay market rates for our employees. So we are increasing some of our wages so that we can attract better talent, because it costs more money to lose an employee than it does to keep one. But we have published our pay and classification rates, and we are very transparent with that money's going to be. No one's getting rich. However, we are trying to be more competitive with our peers, so we don't keep losing employees and having to invest in the service levels that we provide to you and in getting our employees back. Just to talk about some of the revenues, we hit the number that we thought for what we call local receipts. That's the permits and other things that people pay to us, money that we get from the state for land that's owned, no more, no less. So we are breaking even in that sense. We are trying to project it just a little bit lower in case those numbers go down. State aid increased a little bit this year. Thank you to the state. We could have used a lot more, and everybody could use a lot more. We did get a little bit. And the rest of it comes from new growth, which is new permits being taken out and new houses being built, solar is built into that a little bit, and increased evaluations on your houses. That's it. That's all we have for increased revenue. Terms of expenditures, I just went over the highlights. That's all we have for increases. So the rest of the increases, as they should have, went to fund the increase assessment for the school. Okay, we do have 60% of our budget taken up by schools, so it takes up a large chunk of the additional money that we have every year, and that's fine. We need to invest in our schools, we need to invest in our students to increase property values, to increase people's willingness to move to this town and invest in this town. So it does restrict what we can spend on the municipal side, but it is an obligation that we hold dear. And here's where we are in terms of those goals. So you'll see just some simple indicators here. The green means we've hit our financial goal. Red obviously means we've got a lot of work to do, and yellow means we're close. So we're pretty proud that we've had some green, a little bit of yellow. And in revenue projections, again, we're saying we're going to take in a little bit too much money. We need to back that down. That is the only thing right now that we have red. So this budget does back off on the free cash from last year, and it does back off a little bit on the revenue projections in order to try and meet those goals. And here's our financial forecast. I know none of you can see that. So with all of this control and all the things I've talked about, with the budget as it's constructed in front of you right now, we're facing a $200,000 budget deficit next year. Add to that $100,000 use of free cash. We really have a $300,000 deficit, or about 3% of our operating budget. I'm not a doomsday guy. I think we can do it. I think we can increase our revenues, work on our efficiencies, continue to bring down our expenses, but it's going to take a lot just to break even and to accomplish some of these goals, which is why we're controlling and trying to control growth so heavily. And anyone that tells you that you can't look past and try and solve a problem isn't trying hard enough, in my opinion, so that's what we're doing. Five years down the road, with this current spending level, we're looking at an $800,000 deficit in our budget. Now, those are with high projections to make sure that we're not being overly conservative and saying we're going to make it there. We do think we can bring that down with some controls, but we do have a problem. It needs to be fixed, either by increased revenues in the forms of overrides or other things, or by controlling growth, which is what we think the residents want to do right now. So that is the budget presentation from the town, and of course, once we go through the lines, if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
So now, the Chair will be going line by line through the budget document itself. If a resident would like to discuss one of the line items, please call out "hold," and that will be noted. And then, once we get to the end of the section, we then will have discussion. You'll have the opportunity to discuss what you have requested a "hold" on. Is that pretty clear? Yes? Okay. All right, so under general government, we have executive assistant, select board expenses, binding of records, warrant mailings, town administrator salary, town administrator cellphone stipend, town administrator expense. So the total for the... I don't need to... Okay, next. Sorry about that. Learning on the job, folks. Town clerk. We have the town clerk's salary, town clerk certification, town clerk expenses, assistant town clerk wages, elections and registration expenses, elections and registration wages, Board of Registrar wages. Under accounting, we have town accountant services, town accountant expense, annual audit. We have assessors, assessing assistant, assessor's expenses, assessor stipends, assessor's contracted services. We have the treasurer-collector. Treasurer-collector salary, treasurer-collector certification, finance assistant, treasurer-collector expense, treasurer-collector payroll services, treasurer-collector tax title expense. Under legal services, we have legal services. Under conservation commission, we have conservation commission expenses. Operation support. Town office utilities and maintenance, town custodian, town office phone, IT computer maintenance, town website, copier expense. Other, general government. Board of Appeals assistant wages, Board of Appeals expense, town report, moderator salary, Finance Committee expenses, Finance Committee Reserve Fund. So at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve this section. So moved by Mr. Stoddard. Seconded, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on, any discussion on general government expense? All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Next will be public safety. Police chief salary, police wages, police training wages, police training expenses, police assistant, police department maintenance, police department vehicle maintenance, police department equipment and outlay. Fire chief salary, fire department wages, fire department call wages, fire department maintenance, fire department vehicle maintenance, fire department equipment and outlay. Lease of space, professional expenses and services, medical supplies. Other emergency services. Rutland Regional Dispatch Assessment, dispatch maintenance and equipment, emergency planning director, emergency planning expenses, regional animal control officer services. Total for public safety, $1,331,405. Is there a motion to approve this section? So moved by Mr. Stoddard. Seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Section passes unanimously. Growth management. Regional building inspection services. Building department expense. Animal inspector salary. Animal inspector expense. Planning Board. Planning Board expenses. Economic development coordinator. Montezot Regional Planning District Assessment. Master plan expenses. Planning Board Assistant. Inspection services. Board of Health and Concom assistant, building assistant. Health services. Landfill monitoring. Board of Health expenses. Total for growth management is $88,014. Is there a motion to approve this section? So moved by Mr. Stoddard. Seconded by Mr. Haddad. There are no holds. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. So under education, Quabon Regional School Assessment. Montezot Regional Vocational Technical Assessment. QRSD Green Repair. Is there a motion to approve this? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And how about the superintendent? Okay. Is the superintendent present? Madam Superintendent, please come forward. We can have your name and address, please.
Sheila Muir, Superintendent of Schools.
Please proceed.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make the residents of Hubbardston aware that the assessment number that has been put forth by this budget number is lower than the assessment that was certified by the school committee and forwarded to the town. The assessment number that was requested by the school was $4,852,39.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Now the Finance Committee.
I'm Susan Rain. Can you all hear me? Okay. I'm Susan Rain, 10 Waynesville Road, Town Finance Committee Chair. Is that better? Okay. A show of hands. How many of you have seen the school district's budget? How many of you understand it? The budget as presented by the district is broken down by functional categories, but I find educationese mysterious. So I did my own analysis, which I'd like to share with you. The fiscal year 2020 district budget shows a total ask of $35,135,803.66, a 2.8% increase over last year. With 2,118 kids enrolled, this is a per-student ask of $16,589. Of that, 8.9% will go to general and administrative costs. 7.8% will go to transportation. 46.8% will go to program delivery. 10.8% will go to facilities, and 25.7% will go to mandated payments, like benefits and tuition payments for our kids who go elsewhere. More on that later. Let's look at this in more detail. GNA consists of administrator salaries, legal and related expenses. Highlights. GNA salaries excluding benefits total 7.3% of this budget. All GNA personnel received raises this year, ranging from a low of 2% to a high of 6.2%. Nearly $30,000 is allocated to GNA travel and conference attendance. Your 15 school committee members are paid stipends totaling $11,600. Overall, we see a 3.3% increase in the budget for GNA. Transportation is just that, aggregated for all students. The budget for transportation costs increased by 15.5%. Yet according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the price of a gallon of gas and diesel fuel today is down 13 cents from a year ago. Program delivery consists of teacher salaries and related expenses for the delivery of curricula, and ancillary services such as health services, student activities, and athletics. Highlights. Because teacher and other teaching personnel salaries are aggregated, I can't tell what if any raises they may have received. But overall, we see a 2.7% increase in the budget for program delivery. The facilities category consists of building maintenance, heating, utilities, and groundskeeping, custodial, and security services. Highlights. Security costs have increased by 15% for personnel and by 32% for the security system. Decreases in equipment and tech maintenance costs were outstripped by a $69,703 building improvement ask. Overall, we see a 5.6% increase in the budget for facilities. Finally, the mandated payments category consists of benefits, insurance, debt service, and tuition payments to other districts. Tuition payments to other schools total over $2.7 million, 7.7% of the budget ask and up 2.1% from last year. Now, this has my attention. For the district's count, only 85% of our resident kids are students, meaning that 15% of our kids go elsewhere. We almost make up this deficit with school choice and tuition in kids. We're 59 kids short. So if we're paying $16,589 per kid, we're upside down by almost a million dollars, maybe more. Benefits costs dropped from last year by 1.9%, but remain 17% of the total budget. Overall, we see a 0.6% decrease in the budget for mandated payments. So while the overall increase over last year's budget is 2.8%, this is how the increase breaks down. There's a 3.3% increase in GNA, a 15.5% increase in transportation, a 2.7% increase in program delivery, a 5.6% increase in facilities, and a 0.6% decrease... A five-point-six percent increase in facilities and a point-six percent decrease in mandated payments. What happens if Hubbardston rejects the district's increase? You might think that the member towns share in this budget according to their student enrollments. You'd be partly right. Part of the town's assessments is based on a so-called statutory method formula, which as of March 2019 generated the following percentage increases over last year's assessments. Hardwick was up point-five-two percent. Okem, up three-point-eight-nine percent. Berry, up five-point-seventeen percent. New Braintree, up eight-point-six percent. Hubbardston, up eight-point-eight-three percent. And although Hubbardston has about twenty-five percent of the district's student population, because of the statutory method in fiscal year 2020, Hubbardston pays thirty percent of the total assessments. We can't fix this disproportionate outcome today, but today, we need relief. We need the district to, to cut this budget one-point-nine percent so that we do not suffer an operating deficit of over two-hundred thousand dollars and other member towns' budgets likewise benefit. From this exercise alone, I can see room in this district's budget for savings with hands off our teachers. And I am also aware, from the 2017 Collins Report, that there are revenues and expenses included in revolving accounts that are not shown on this budget, and they offer additional opportunities for savings. Your Finance Committee recommended that the town budget for a four-point-four-five percent increase in its district assessment. With this increase, we as a town will spend fifty-seven cents of every operating budget dollar on schools. That means we have only forty-three cents left for everything else. Nine cents to maintain our roads and cemeteries. One cent to manage our growth through our inspeccional services, planning board, and board of health. Fifteen cents to ensure our public safety. One cent to fund our sense of who we are. Helping our seniors and our veterans. Supporting our library, our agricultural and historical commissions, our parks and community activities, and our town clock. Three cents to pay down our borrowings in fiscal year 2020 for our roads. One dump truck, one fire truck, and one police car. Seven cents to pay our health, unemployment, and liability insurance premiums and our retirement and FICA obligations. And seven cents to run this little town. To pay and manage the people who are responsible for collecting, spending, and accounting for our revenues. Handling tasks ranging from the running of town elections to the issuance of dog licenses. And making sure that what we do complies with state and federal law. The increase the district wants us to absorb means that we would instead spend sixty cents on education, leaving forty cents for everything else. Where and what would you like to see cut to save two-hundred thousand dollars? Remember that several of these items, like insurance, debt service, and union contract obligations are fixed. So some of these items, like road repair and maintenance and even public safety, will suffer disproportionately. Again, where and what would you like to see cut? So what should we do? We want to make changes to our district agreement to smooth out these increases mainly by changing the assessment formula, to abandon the statutory method. To realign assessments with enrollments to produce a fairer and more predictable outcome. But tonight, we must decide what we can afford to spend and on what. Because Hubbardston has historically rejected Prop Two-and-a-Half overrides for education, your Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to approve the budget included with this warrant. If enough of the other member towns agree with our thinking, and we think that they will, this will begin a negotiation process with the district that is intended to serve the town's and its kids' best interests. While there is always a chance that negotiations will fail, we remain optimistic that the district will find savings in G and A and other non-program spending to help us and the other member towns live within our means and work with us to prioritize program deliver, delivery over the other budget categories. In the end, the district can only be successful if its member towns can support it without reservation. Our support cannot come at the cost of our own well-being, which will spiral downwards if we spend beyond our means today and the volatility of these increases don't stop tomorrow. Let's pass our recommended budget and move forward to work productively with the district and our member towns to solve this problem both in the short term and the long term.
So now the chair will entertain a motion to pass the, the section on education. Mr. Stoudt, Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Williams. All in favor, please raise your card. Those, thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the motion passes. Public Works and Cemeteries. DPW Director. DPW Wages. DPW Assistant. Municipal Lights. DPW Road Maintenance. General Highway. Equipment and Machinery Repairs. Employee Overtime, Winter Wages. Highway Winter Outside Services. Equipment, Supplies, and Materials. Plowing of Private Ways. Cemetery. Cemetery Maintenance and Improvement. Cemetery Equipment and Outlay. Veterans Graves. Tree Warden. Tree Warden Wages. Tree Warden Outside Services. Total for Public Works and Cemeteries, eight-hundred thirty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to approve this section. Moved by Mr. Stoudt, seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Section passes unanimously. Resident Services. Mark Van Expenses. Counsel on Aging Director. Counsel on Aging Expense. Veteran Services. Regional Assessment. Veteran Services Expenses. Veteran Training Expenses. Veteran Benefits. Veteran Flags. Library. Library Director. Assistant, direct, Library Assistant Wages. Library Utilities and Maintenance. Library Books and Materials. Commissions. Agricultural Commission Expense. Historical Commission Expenses. Town Clock Maintenance. Celebrations. Memorial Day. Park Services and Expense. Park Services and Expense. Total Resident Services, one-hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to approve this section. Mr., a motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Stoudt. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And section passes unanimously. Unclassified. Interest on Short-Term Debt. Twenty-thirteen Roads Project P. Twenty-thirteen Roads Project I. DPW Six-Wheel Dump with Plow, voted twenty-fourteen P. DPW Six-Wheel Dump with Plow, voted twenty-fourteen I. Fire Truck Dump Truck. Fire Truck Dump Truck Interest. Sergeant SUV Bought in Twenty-fourteen P. Sergeant SUV Bought Twenty-fourteen I. Insurance. Worcester Regional Retirement. Chapter Thirty-two B Health Insurance. FICA Assessment of Employee Benefits. Unemployment Compensation Expense. General Insurance. Total, unclassified, eight-hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars. The chair will entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Stoudt, seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. The total is nine million, two-hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Uh, it had already been made. Already, initially, initially. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the motion passes. Article Nine. Mr. Galant moves that the town transfer from the free cash, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars, to fund the Senior Citizen Work-Off Tax Abatement Program. Account Number zero-zero-one-dash-one-four-one-dash-five-one-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero for fiscal year 2020. Motion by Mr. Galant. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you, and the motion passes. Article Ten. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of six thousand, five hundred dollars, to fund the purchase of equipment, including all costs incidental and related thereto, for the town's cemeteries for fiscal year 2020 as printed in the warrant. Motion by Mr. Williams. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Stoudt. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. If anyone would like to address this article. Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Eleven. Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the Hubbardston Preservation Fund, Fund Two-Eleven, the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for prior fiscal year deposits made in error to the Selectmen's miscellaneous account. Motion by Mr. Gerard. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams, Mr. Hadad. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article Twelve. Mr. Hadad moves that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the amount of one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents for the purpose of supplementing the fiscal year 2019 appropriations for the following accounts as printed in the warrant. Grave Opening, sixty dollars. Parks and Rec Expenses, eleven dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, Police, is that the Police Department? Police Department Underage Drinking Grant of seventy-six dollars and forty-two cents. Motion by Mr. Hadad. Is there a second? Mr. Gerard seconds. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And article passes unanimously. Article Thirteen. Mr. Stoudt moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred ten dollars from the Municipal Capital Stabilization Fund and the sum of two-hundred and four thousand, ninety dollars from free cash to pay for fiscal year 2020 cash capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto as printed in the warrant. This will require a two-thirds vote to transfer funds from the, the stabilization fund. Motion made by Mr. Stoudt. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this motion? Hearing none. Um, I will call for the vote. Remember, a two-thirds vote is required. Those in favor of the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm sorry about that. Thank you. So your, your name and address, please.
Carol Whitney of Williamsville Road, on number six. What are we spending twenty-five thousand dollars on at the Hubbardston Center School?
Uh, so, last year, this article came up in terms of capital. So this comes from the Quabbin Regional School District Capital Plan. Uh, in meeting with the school committee and, and school officials, the Hubbardston Center School is in dire need of an upgrade to its cafeteria equipment. We tried to bring this article last year, and due to a mistake of mine, the, um, the total wasn't right. So this is being brought again a year later. Uh, the total needed for this purchase is twenty-five thousand dollars to fund cafeteria equipment at the, the elementary school for the students.
I'm sorry, ma'am. So that, so that everyone can hear you, if you can just come to the microphone, please.
Equipment covers an awful lot of things. What specifically are they buying?
Is there a member of the school committee or school administration that would like to explain?
The piece of equipment that, um, is needed for the cafeteria in Hubbardston Center School is a combi oven. It's a, it's a, a combination of a stove and oven and a steamer that's used for, um, preparation of school lunches.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Sir, again, your name and address, please.
Joe Bartolome, one-thirty-eight Ragged Hill Road. I'm curious about number two, the dump truck. How many dump trucks do we have in that garage now? Does somebody know?
Thank you, sir.
I'm embarrassed, I don't know the total. Travis, how many dump trucks do we have?
And how many men we got working for the DPW?
Six, including the, uh, director. So, so last year, just to speak to the roller, sir, if you don't mind. So last year, we rented a roller. It cost a little over five thousand for a roller and a trailer. Uh, this was allowing us a very small window to make sure that graded and dirt roads were, were rolled. Plus the patches that do a better job in town, that you've noticed, are the ones that the DPW rolled. Elm Street, Brigham Street. Um, and although, you know, it's, it's not perfect, it definitely provides a better service. So the reason for the roller in town is so that the DPW can expand the season that they're allowed, uh, able to do that.
That's fine, I understand. That's fine, I understand, but I'm curious, we can't do without the dump truck for one year? I mean, I'd rather see half of this stuff go and just get the handguns and the new cruiser, and not have one of these guys have to go someplace on their own with no backup, because we bought a new dump truck.
So, the cruiser is included in this, it's part of a vehicle rotation, and the dump truck is in desperate need of upgrade. It is the vehicle that goes up and down sixty-eight, so it's a mainline truck, and the wear and tear on the trucks requires a plan, and I can tell you that we are putting together a vehicle replacement plan to make it public, in order for everyone to, because this question comes up a lot, to see why we rotate them so quickly, and to show the wear and tear that vehicles take, because they're not like our vehicles, they are service vehicles that are constantly on the road doing the work of the town.
Thank you, yes ma'am.
I am Donna Russell from Street Road. I would just like some further clarification on six, about the new cafeteria equipment. I guess I'm kind of confused as to why the Hubbardston Center School, I thought that it was part of the regional school district, so is this a separate expense from what the budget for the regional school district would be? And I'm wondering why something like that isn't coming out of the regional school district budget?
Excuse me, sir, if we can get the microphone back, please, thank you.
That's actually a really good question. So, the Hubbardston Center School is owned by the town of Hubbardston, not by the Quabon District, it's, you know, quote-unquote leased back to them. Expenses over five thousand dollars to the building are considered a town expense, not a Quabon Regional School District expense, and that's by the regional agreement.
Thank you, any further discussion?
I don't quite know how to introduce this topic, but we were talking about dump trucks, always a favorite topic.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, again, your address, that's okay?
I'm sorry, Tom Robinson, five Brigham Street.
Thank you.
With respect to the question number one on the ballot next week, it reads that it's for the repair, paving, and maintenance of town road surfaces, and during verbal discussions at meetings, it was pointed out that that would be exclusion, it would exclude buying any equipment with this money. Is that still the case? It's for subcontract paving and not dump trucks?
Right, so the money, this is out of free cash right now, so all these purchases, one through eight, are out of either municipal capital, a combination of municipal capital stabilization account, and free cash. When we get to the road repair in a little bit, the town does not have the equipment or the expertise to do road grinding and paving. So, all of that work, and although that work always has been subcontracted out to a paver, we do not have the intention ever to purchase all of the equipment needed, which would be in the millions of dollars to pave our own roads, so, no, this is just for daily work around town.
And just real quick, we'll get into it in a few minutes, but the main point of the item we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight, is the fact that we only get a certain amount of money, and can only fix a certain amount each year through chapter ninety. So, the point of what we'll be talking about in a little while with that item, is to increase our capacity to be able to fix roads faster.
Thank you, Mr. Galant. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Bella Caldera, twelve Simonville Road. Out of curiosity, how many new handguns are we getting? What caliber are they? What make are they? And what's the magazine capacity, if you please?
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, everybody, whoa, this is loud. So, I'm smart enough to know when I'm not smart enough, so, the sergeant aside of me is the firearms expert for the town, and he can speak on, Bella, I believe your question was how many firearms? Is that the question?
Make also the caliber and the clip capacity.
Okay.
Is that correct, ma'am? Thank you. Sergeant?
They are Glock seventeens, they're nine millimeters, and we'll be replacing all the duty handguns that we have, which is ten handguns.
Capacity, Sergeant?
Seventeen rounds.
Seventeen.
Which is, which is more than what we have now, which our guns carry thirteen right now, so it's four more rounds.
Okay, including one in the chamber?
Yes.
Got it, thank you very much. Did that answer your question, ma'am? Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Article thirteen, please show your card. Two-thirds is needed. Thank you. Those opposed, please show your card. Thank you, and the article passes. Article fourteen. Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to transfer from the accounts printed in the warrant, the sum of thirteen thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-three cents to the general stabilization account. Motion by Mr. Galant, is there a second? Mr. Gerard, seconds, thank you. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, for the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And article passes unanimously. Article fifteen. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to rescind the unissued borrowing authorizations approved under certain previously voted town meeting articles, as printed in the warrant. Motion by Mr. Williams, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, for the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you. Article passes unanimously. CPA Articles. Article sixteen. Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to appropriate and set aside for future spending from the community preservation annual estimated revenues, the amounts recommended by the committee preservation, by the committee preservation committee, for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year twenty twenty, as printed in the warrant, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Motion by Mr. Gerard, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Committee took no action. Is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee present? And would they like to make a presentation? No, okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you, and the article passes unanimously. Article seventeen. Mr. Hadad moves that the town vote to transfer the remaining balances totaling six thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents from prior spending authorizations approved under certain previously voted town meeting articles, as printed in the warrant, to the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Motion made by Mr. Hadad, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gerard. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee took no action. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you, and Article seventeen passes unanimously. Article eighteen. Mr. Starter moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Account, for the purpose of restoring and rehabilitating for recreational use the Curtis Recreational Field, Hubbardston Youth Baseball Fields, to become compliant according with the Cal Ripken League Regulations, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Motion by Mr. Starter, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee took no action. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Okay, seeing none. Excuse me. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you, and the article passes. Article nineteen. Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two thousand six hundred eighteen dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Account, to purchase a portable ice skating rink for winter recreational and open space purposes, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Motion by Mr. Galant, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee took no action. Will you please give your name and address, please?
My name is Laura Foley, from twelve Pitcherville Road. I think a skating rink is a great idea. I'm wondering if there are any plans in place for who is going to maintain it, specifically who gets to shovel it off, and if that is part of this budget, or if that is yet to be determined.
Very good, thank you. Hopefully not the moderator. Oops, oops. Always read the fine print, folks. Anyone in particular?
Hi, Sandra Berry, not, not the Woods Lane. So, the Parks Committee actually put this forward to CPA because, I'm sorry, I'm short. The Parks Committee actually put this forward to CPA, because we noticed a lot of kids don't necessarily skate on the ponds like us old kids do, so, we thought it'd be really nice, if you look around, a lot of the local towns have these portable rinks. The Parks Plan is to set it up, do our best to maintain it, but maybe work with a senior work-off person, maybe work with them, we work with them quite a bit, and we're hoping we might get someone who would be interested in helping to maintain it. We have bought equipment that is in this price, that is supposed to help maintain it.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the motion passes. Article nineteen passes. Article twenty. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Account, for excavating areas of the Hubbardston Public Library Brick Foundation, including backfilling, seeding, and all costs incidental and related thereto, for historic preservation and restoration purposes. Motion is made by Mr. Williams, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Starter. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee took no action. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article twenty-one. Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve Account, for the purpose of reimbursing First Parish Unitarian Church, for the cost of preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, repairing, and replacing the historic building's roof, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Motion is made by Mr. Gerard, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee took no action. For the purposes of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion?
Carol Whitney, Williamsville Road. A CP, a CPC grant was applied for and approved at town, last town meeting, as worded by the town council, which had a portion funded outright, and the remainder of the fund being a loan. The parish committee, in good faith, put the project out to bid, and awarded the power HRG, the bids for the project came in under the requested amount of seventy-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, at sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and eleven cents. A contract was signed for the project with the contractor of the roof replacement project on October ninth, two thousand eighteen. Our project start date of, in October the sixteenth, was agreed upon. The town was contacted to submit the invoice for payment, as instructed by town officials, on how to obtain payment for the work of the grant. It was at this point that it became known, it became known, that the state would not let the town obtain a loan for this project, because of a religious organization was involved. As the state ruling had come down about such matters, with an exception for historic structures, not religious projects, such as building maintenance, our project fell into this exemption category. But the state bond council refused approval of the funding. The parish committee was in a predicament. The contract for the work was in place, partial funding was available, and the roof was still leaking, and the structure damage to the building needed to stop as soon as possible, before irreversible water damage to the main beams and trusses occurred. The contractor helped the church to obtain a loan for the balance of the, that the town was unable to finance. This loan was a zero percent interest, and Power HRG paid fees involving, as a gift to the church, a loan of twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. The church put a deposit of two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars down for the project. The project has, also had an addendum added, when the workers installed, went to install the new gutters, it was found that the fascia boards that they would be fastening to were rotting, and the replacement was recommended. These fascia boards were replaced for an additional cost of one thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. The church paid the amendment of the project. The First Parish realizes the going forward of the project was their decision, but the delay would surely have allowed more damage to the building, and the contracts were signed, and in good faith, with the advice of the town board members, and the vote of the town. Proactive maintenance is the key to keeping costs down for these types of projects. The First Parish is aware, and truly grateful, for the help, support, and efforts of all the town employees and board members. Given when the funding, as they anticipated, fell through, help is needed to pay the debt, and the First Parish submits this grant with a sincere plea of hope that the original grant would be satisfied in full and under budget. The state ruling gave allowances for, they would not approve of a loan, but we can still pay, get paid for out of the funds that were on hand. So, all we're asking is that we're taking, we're re-appropriating where the funds came from, that were approved last year. So, instead of borrowing the money, we're asking that the money get taken out of money that is already in-house. So, we just have to approve where the money is coming from this year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you, and the motion passes. General Articles. Article twenty-two. Mr. Hadad moves that the vote, that the town vote- General Articles, Article twenty-two, Mr. Hadad Moves That the Vote, That the Town Vote Pursuant to General Law forty, Section five B, to Create a Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for Municipal Road Repair and Maintenance, and is Funding Therefore to Raise and Appropriate the Sum of $350,000 to Said Stabilization Fund Provided However That the Vote Taken Here Under Shall Be Expressly Contingent Upon Approval by the Voters of a Proposition Two and a Half So-Called Override Question in accordance with General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, small g, to be Held on June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. This will require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Hadad has made the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Galant. Mr. Galant, did you want to be recognized?
Please.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Galant?
Hi.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Galant. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. I apologize, sir.
Thank you. So, this, this item needs some explanation. So, we understand the lack of appetite for the word override, and we do everything we can to avoid having to come into a situation, whether it be school or any other reason, to have to ask for an override. But what we think this is, this is creative. We know everybody, and we've seen it over the last six years, how supportive and everybody is generalizing, but, but it seems overwhelming in support that people want their roads fixed. And we have committed ourselves to, along with the DPW, to, to having a long-term plan, being really organized from a five-year basis, and that's going to get increased as well as, as time moves on. So, what we discovered was there's, there's something we can create with the use of the override word. And what that is here is, we get about $350,000 a year to pave roads in town through chapter ninety. This year was the, the work that was done on New Westminster and the related roads around the Apprentice Road and all that. We try to cluster them to, to get the most bang for our buck. So, for example, that's a, a set of roads that we performed this year. But that's the money we have, is three hundred and fifty thousand. We'd love to do more, but don't have the money for it. So what this does is, what this vote would be tonight is to create a fund that, at a maximum of $350,000, which is essentially, we picked that number because it's kind of a, a good number to bite off a couple of projects at once, that would then annually match the three hundred and fifty thousand we get from the state. Now, the interesting part about this fund is, it is Proposition Two and a Half Override, but it's, it's not, it's voted on every year by the Board of Selectmen, so it doesn't actually have to happen each year. So, and also, after three years, it, it, when you set up a fund like this, it can be rescinded at town meeting. So if we don't want it anymore, we can get rid of it. And this is really not our idea to waste money, it is our idea to get roads fixed faster. And that's why you saw in some of your packets, the amount of analysis we've done based on a lot of the roads in town, and a lot of those would get accelerated and when they'd get fixed. And so, I think that's generally that I think, ran on all of it there, Ryan? And to reiterate what some of the questions were before, once it goes into this road stabilization fund, it can only be used for roads forever.
So I just would like to add, if I may, Mr. Moderator. You know, I've had, I've had folks ask questions about override versus dead exclusion and what the differences for those mean. Initially, when we first talked about this, we, we wanted to do a dead exclusion, because on a dead exclusion, you put a sunset on it. We can say five years, four years, whatever, whatever we want. So the initial plan was to do a dead exclusion, which is still a two and a half override, it's just a two and a half override for a certain amount of time. But as, as we found out, you, you can't do that for roads. That's not allowed by the state. Good job, Massachusetts. So, the only way we can do a dead exclusion legally would be to take out a loan. So if you added up three hundred and fifty thousand times five years, comes out to 1.75 million dollars. So we'd have to take out a loan in one lump sum for 1.7 million dollars, which sounds good until you look at the interest payments on it, and the average interest payment's going to be over $200,000. Well, that's like a home of the road we can pave, and that's stupid to waste our money. So, then we looked at whether or not we can put a sunset clause on an override and say that in, okay, we're going to pass an override, but in five years it's going to, it's going to come up for another vote. And that's not allowed by Massachusetts law either. We can't put a sunset clause on it. The override can go away, like, like Dan said, but it has to be voted on at the meeting. So it would have to come up at the meeting in three years, four years, five years, whatever we want. When, when we see that the roads have finally started to, to make some headway, the town, this, this body can vote to stop that override, and it goes away. Whatever money's left in the stabilization account for roads stays with roads. As Mr. Robinson brought up, we're not doing this paving ourself. We're not in the business of doing heavy paving work. This is stuff that's all contracted out. All the stuff that you've seen done in the last six years, all the roads that have been done, Hale Road, Healdville's, sixty-eight South, that's all put out for bid and, and done by people with experience in that. So, this money for roads is not to buy equipment, it is not to buy cold patch, it is simply to develop a fund of money so that every year, instead of doing $350,000 of roadwork, we can do $700,000 of roadwork. So we can contract with a, a contractor and get out there and do almost a million dollars of work every year. You know, we figure between, you know, five years, six years, seven years, we're going to have a big chunk of town done. And at that point, we can come back as a group and vote this override out and, and be done with it and have some decent roads.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Mr. Galant?
And I just want to add one more thing. So, because it is often, often the, the question. But for that three hundred and fifty thousand, it, the average taxpayer, it's about $193 for that year. So, and one other note is, it doesn't, the Board of Selectmen, for example, next year, doesn't have to go all the way up to three hundred and fifty thousand, it could be two hundred and fifty thousand. It's just that's the maximum threshold on an annualized basis that the Board of Selectmen could vote to authorize that fund to be utilized. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to the, the motion?
Mr. Moderator, Heather Petrowitz, fifty-nine Grimes Road. I just have a couple of questions on clarification for this. So, when we're talking about overrides, generally, you know, you have the dead exclusion, the capital exclusion, and then the just general prop two and a half override, the thing that's going to be on there forever. So the way it was explained, it seems like it's, it seems to be distinguished a little bit different than the forever one, where this is something that the select board says, okay, this is what we're entering into, it goes to town meeting, following town meeting, you know, at any point in the future it can be rescinded and so forth. But in general, for the most part, it's one of those that once you say you're entering into, it goes on and continues. My concern is that with general prop two and a half overrides, so a general, you know, say the town says, okay, we just want to, we're not making it, we need $500,000, we're going to do a prop two and a half override forevermore for $500,000. The way the law currently is, unless I'm missing a piece, is that the purpose of those funds is only guaranteed for that first year. So when you go to vote, you say, okay, so we said that we're doing this override for $350,000 for roads, it can only be spent on roads, and that's it. The following year, what restricts that piece of funds for that specific purpose? Or maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing a new law that came from municipal modernization, two thousand and sixteen, I'm not sure.
So, you are right. Every, every year that money is going to have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, town council, that, that money has to be appropriated into the road stabilization fund. But I'm going to say to you, shame on this body, and shame on every citizen in here, if year two, year three, year four, you vote that money to do something else. That's not under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, that's under the purview of every voter in here. So the voters in here would have to specifically authorize that money to be used for something else. So, if we do that, that's the collective decision by, by this body, not by the five people up here.
I think sometimes it just gets confusing to the regular resident, because what ends up happening is after you're done the first year, when you're looking at the revenues, it doesn't really show itself as that three hundred and fifty plus the two and a half percent increase, it just kind of blends in with the rest of the funds. So as long as people are keeping their hand on the pulse on that one.
You're, you're exactly right. You're a hundred percent right. A dead exclusion would have been probably a much more palatable way to go, but we can't do it. And we, we can't, we just can't do it. I mean, again, unless we want to spend a lot of interest money, but I don't think anybody wants to waste $200,000 in interest. So, again, you are right. It is an over, it's an override. So it could stay there forever. If we want to decide as a town that every year we're going to put that $350,000 into road maintenance, great, you know, but that's, that's a decision of this body and this gym to do that. So, any override, a general override can be rescinded at any time. So this is no different. So a general, this is no, there's no special law on this that says it's a road override or it's a school override. An override's an override. But that money from the override has to be appropriated, and that appropriation comes from the authority of everyone in this room. So, it would be the collective decision of everybody not to use it for roads. It would have to be the decision of everybody to get rid of it. Again, that authority does not rest with any Board of Selectmen, even after we're all gone, it rests with everybody in here, which will eventually be us over there.
Ms. Moderator, if I may, Carol and Mary, Town Council. Just to clarify one thing. This is a slightly different stabilization fund, that once you actually do vote to create it, you can also vote to rescind it, but the vote to create it or to rescind it goes in effect for three years. So once we make this decision, we are stuck with it for three years.
Okay, excellent. So I, I just have a couple more questions.
Real quick, could I just, could I add to that?
Yes, Mr. Galant.
But we don't actually have to authorize the monies.
Town Council?
Correct. So, so similar to what you were describing earlier, if this were a general override, and if it were, let's say it was for the school department, the first year, if the override is approved, that $350,000 has to be spent for the purpose stated for the schools. In year two, that $350,000 is still built into your tax levy capacity. But in year two, you can spend that, meaning this body that appropriates the money, can spend that money on anything it wishes to spend it on. This is separate. This is a special stabilization fund set up, as you mentioned, under the Municipal Modernization Act, so that the $350,000, assuming the voters approve this next week, that is your initial threshold, your initial ceiling, if you will. So that $350,000, if approved by town meeting tonight and the voters next week, goes into this road maintenance stabilization fund. Next year, that $350,000 gets increased by two and a half percent. The select board at that point can decide next year, do we want to appropriate the $350,000 plus the 2.5 percent, or, and again, has to only be for roads and road maintenance, or the select board could decide next year, we don't think we need that full $350,000 plus the 2.5 percent. They may decide, as Mr. Galant had mentioned, maybe we only need $250,000. So if year two, the town, the, the Board of Selectmen decide to only appropriate $250,000, year three, the select board can only increase that by 2.5 percent over the $250,000. So you do have to be careful if you are reducing the amount, you are effectively reducing what you can spend in the future, but it does have to be spent on roads.
Excellent. So, my, my next follow-up question was, when you guys brought up the fact that, one of the questions you often get is, what is the average cost of the taxpayer? So that you said the average cost was a hundred and something dollars per year for that first year, and then noting it will go up, you know, two and a half and so forth. But what's the average assessment that you base that number on? Because many of us at home, you know, we have an idea of where our assessment is, and not knowing what that base number is, that might be much higher for us or much lower.
The average home in Hubbardston is worth about $250,000. So that's based on the average $250,000 home.
Of being about a hundred and thirty-six.
Hundred ninety-two dollars. It'd say $200.
About $200 a year.
About $200 for the average $250,000 home.
All right. And so my very last question is, so one of the pieces we had discussed earlier was relative to the school. So as, as mentioned, the Quabon had recommended the assessment to the town of Hubbardston and all of its communities at a higher amount than what the town of Hubbardston had voted in as part of their budget. And it still goes to the other communities to see where we're at as far as whether or not they approve or they don't approve a, the amount that was recommended or not. My only concern as a resident is what happens in the event that we don't have enough support from the other communities, and we end up getting stuck with that amount, and it comes back to the town either saying, okay, the town either has to cut services, or now we have to look at an override, and yet we just voted $350,000 for the override for the roads, which we very much need, but now we're digging even deeper into the pockets of some who may not be able to afford it.
So, the school, for anyone who's been in this town meeting forum for any length of time, knows that the school issue is a recurring issue. So, it's, I would say we've had a, a good run for a couple of years where we've been able to afford things, but this has been a recurring issue and will be a recurring issue. But I, I understand completely what you're saying. If, if the other towns approve the budget, and it comes back to Hubbardston, and we have to, to do it, we have to come back to a meeting and, in the fall. And we'll have a meeting in the fall to decide what level of services we want, how we want to fund it, what we want to do. And again, that's up to the people in, in here. You know, the select board and Ryan will have multiple options for people, and it would be at that point that, that folks have to choose what we think the most palatable option is. So, I hate to, to deal in, it's a great question, I, I, it's hard to deal in hypotheticals because I don't know. I mean, if another town, you know, in the next couple of weeks were the first town to vote on a school budget, if another town votes it down, you know, they're going to have to go back to the drawing board. But it, it's, it's a good question. You know, we have a lot of competing needs. We have to pay for education, we have to pay for a fire department, we have to pay for a police department, we have terrible roads that need maintenance. So, it's, we have a lot of needs, and roads is one thing that people constantly, you know, complain about. It's the, it's the biggest thing when you're paying tax dollars and driving on roads that are busting up your suspension. I get it. So, this is one means to fix the road. Is it the best? You know, who knows? We've been successful leveraging grants, but there's not a lot of grants for side roads. There's not a lot of grants for Evergreen Road or Dogwood Lane. There's, there's no grants for that stuff. There's grants for sixty-eight, sixty-two, we can get that for that. So, you know, we're going to, whether this passes or not, the town's going to move forward and continue to fix our roads with the best money we can. This allows us to fix them quicker and fix more at a time. Eventually, we're going to have them fixed, and we don't need it anymore. So it will go away. But it's, it's a, it's a valid question, and I don't have a good answer for you.
Thank you very much.
And, and thanks very much for the questions. And let me just close this, it doesn't have to close it. But the reason that we brought it up, and I'm just going to reiterate, is because of the sort of energy and enthusiasm we've seen as a board for roads. So that's why it's here. It's like, you know, why not now?
Thank you, Mr. Galant. Excuse me. Anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, remember this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. Please keep your cards raised if you are opposed. And counters, if you can swing into Thank you. If you can please lower your cards. We're going to have to count the yes votes now as well. Sorry about that, kind of doing it in reverse. If you are in favor, please show your card and please keep your card raised. Please lower your cards. One oh nine in the affirmative, thirty-four in the negative, the motion passes. Article twenty-three. Mr. Stoddard moves that the town vote to amend the town of Hubbardston general bylaws by adding a new chapter, thirty-three, entitled Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix 115.8A of the Massachusetts Building Code. Seven eighty C M R, the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January first, 2020, as printed in the handout for this town meeting. Mr. Stoddard makes the motion, moves the motion, and is, it's seconded, seconded by Mr. Haddad. Thank you. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? I was all set to recognize. Sir.
Rick Green, twenty-five Old Westminster Road. I'm not familiar with all the, many aspects of the Stretch Energy Code. However, the current building code is so over the top, very restrictive. I think it was, a lot of that stuff was promoted by Mansfield to get more insulation in houses. How could you get any more insulation and any less infiltration to a house, almost to the point of being unhealthy? And, I think that anything that's gonna add another dollar to construction costs should be avoided.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak to the motion? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Vincent Ritchie, one Ed Clark Road. I've had this discussion with Ryan, and I want to say that I am in favor of the Stretch Code in the context of the green communities grants that we would be able to apply for and receive under this green communities legislation. But, I had, as I mentioned, the conversation, because it's not only the adoption of the Stretch Code, which Rich is correct, will add more insulation and more cost to the new construction. However, that seems to be inevitable, because the state is continually updating the energy codes, and it seems that sooner rather than later, or perhaps later rather than sooner, we're all gonna be subject to those energy codes. And, if we don't adopt the Stretch Code, we won't get any grant money. But, there are still four other contingencies that the communities must meet in order to be classified as a green community. Three of those four are not difficult, but the fourth one requires that the town zoning ordinances grant the use of solar power, solar research and development, and solar manufacturing by right, which means it can go anywhere, anyplace in our town. Now, I originally authored the solar bylaw, and it was written as of right in the town. So, I am not opposed to having it in town, and I believe in solar. However, last year, this body at this meeting voted to make the solar bylaw contingent upon a special permit, which means it is not by right. So, I'm pointing this out, because I don't want to get the town into a, I don't think we should get into a situation where we want to do this, we want to get the grant money. But, I'd like the clarification that the state will accept the zoning regulations that we have now, which is solar by special permit. And, we don't get caught into a catch-22 where we want it, but we can't have it, because it requires solar by right. So, I'm, I'm pretty much throwing it back at Ryan, because he's had some good research, and I'm hoping he can clarify and confirm that we'll be able to have this green community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Vin. I appreciate you keeping me on my toes. The, so, the, the reason why that we are applying for this grant is to become a green community. So, we are one of the very last communities in Massachusetts to not be a green community, which means we're going, if we didn't become a green community, we would miss out on about a hundred and thirty thousand would be the base grant, in order to address some capital and energy efficiency in our buildings. We've also included the schools into our energy audit, so we can spend some money on, from their capital side in the schools. And, it is my understanding that the, from presentations that the Board of Selectmen received and information that I've received from the state, that the difference between the Stretch Energy Code and the building code now is, is negligible. But, we do have Kelly Brown here from Green Division. She has a title. She's from the green communities to address that. She is a state official in here to answer anyone's question.
Sure. So, just to add on.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, if you can give us your name and your title, please.
Sure. So, my name's Kelly Brown. I work with the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division. I've had the pleasure of attending a lot of town meetings, specifically in this area. Just to elaborate a little bit on the Stretch Code, and then I'll also talk about the zoning that was mentioned. The Stretch Code's been adopted by 265 communities to date. In your area, Berry's been under the Stretch Code since 2011. Rutland just adopted the Stretch Code. Templeton has the Stretch Code. Gardner adopted the Stretch, Stretch Code in 2010, as well as Westminster back in 2012. So, there's a lot of communities that have been following the Stretch Code for many years, and Ryan's correct. If the community moves forward, adopts the Stretch Code, that's one of the criteria that needs to become a green community, and then there'd be eligible grant funds, such as starting out about a hundred and thirty thousand. And, those can go towards things that actually were mentioned earlier. So, an eligible thing for the grant would be an oven at the school that you would have to pay for, or upgrading the lighting and such. But, specifically related to the zoning, the current zoning, nothing related to the actual solar bylaw, but the town's been working with, the Monctezet Regional Planning Commission, has already looked at your current zoning under manufacturing and research and development, and you already meet the criteria. There is no change needed to the zoning as it is today for Hubbardston to become a green community. That's already been reviewed prior to coming here tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions as far as this article? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And, the article passes. Article twenty-four. Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty-four N., Section Three, to impose a local excise tax on the retail sale of marijuana for adult use on marijuana retailers operating within the town at the rate of three percent. Motion is made by Mr. Galant. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Jerome. Any discussion as far as the, the motion? Anyone want to speak to the motion? Without further ado, all in, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Sue Braggy from Root Road. So, are we opening up a pot shop in town? Or, is, is that being rude?
Mr. Stoddard.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but the town did a vote, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, to accept the marijuana state bylaws. So, we are open for development if one should come. And, we have to, we have to set the tax rate that we're allowed to by the state if one should apply to come.
Okay. So, do we have anybody interested in, like, cultivating pot or something like that in town?
Mr. Stoddard?
I, I would refer that to the planning board, because that's, that's, those are applications we don't see, but I'm not aware of any, anything. There you go. Mr. Robinson, Chair of the Planning Board.
Well, that's, that's good. So, why are we voting this? So, just in case?
So, if, if one, if one should come up within the year, and somebody opens up a pot shop, we can get tax money from it, because we're allowed to by the state.
Anyone else care to speak to this motion? All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And, the article passes unanimously. Article twenty-five. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to accept the layout of Streeter Road as a public way and the location depicted on the plan entitled, quote, "Layout Plan of Streeter Road, Hubbardston, Mass." unquote. Dated November thirtieth, 2018, and revised on page three on October first, 2019, I'm sorry, April first, 2019, prepared by ZOK surveyors as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen on April twenty-second, 2019, and as on file with the town clerk. And, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain or otherwise the fee to and/or easements in said Streeter Road as depicted on said plan, and to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out said acquisitions and other acts authorized herein. This will require a two-thirds vote. Motion has been made by Mr. Williams. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Stoddard. Anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Deb Reed from Streeter Road. We'd like to especially thank the members of the Select Board, and the past and present members of the Planning Board who have helped us to reach this juncture. We've appreciated your guidance, your wisdom, and your reasonableness, and especially your fair-mindedness. The information I'm presenting to you tonight are facts based on copious research, as well as easily attained information from public records. Streeter Road is the only private road in town that connects two public roads. It's used daily by the motoring public. Every other private road in town, as well as numerous public roads, are dead ends or loop back around into their own neighborhoods. Clearly, such roads are only being used by and for the people who live on those roads. They're not used by the general public the way Streeter Road is. It's important for people to know that Streeter Road is used by Hubbardston and Westminster as a turnaround for school buses and parents picking up and dropping off their children every day of the school year. The damage that's done by the buses and these extra vehicles are not repaired by the town, but the residents of the road are expected to pay the cost of those repairs. As a matter of public safety, there's a fire hydrant that is located in the pond that would be used for any nearby fire, whether a home on Grimes Road, Old Westminster Road, or for any other need that might arise. So, there's already another public use of this private road. There's twenty-five homes on Streeter Road in 2019. Those property owners paid over $110,000 in real estate taxes alone, at the same rate as all other homeowners in the town. In 2020, ten percent of our taxes are slated to go to the DPW department. That means that over $11,000 of Streeter Road residents' tax dollars in the upcoming year will support the purchase of a new roller, a new dump truck, or any other needed equipment. Since 2002, when the town stopped maintaining Streeter Road, which they had done for many decades, the residents have contributed nearly $100,000 to the DPW, DPW budget. We believe that we're entitled to benefit from some of that equipment, the same as other residents in town are. In nineteen eighty, eighteen ninety-six, there's a deed that refers to Streeter Road as a way to Gardner. There's maps from nineteen fifty, eighteen fifty-seven and nineteen thirty-eight that show Streeter Road connecting two public wa, two public roads. So, for over 120 years, it's been a dirt road, or gravel road, and we'd like it to stay that way. All that's needed to keep the road in good condition is twice a year grading and some occasional gravel. Expensive upgrades are not needed, and the residents are not seeking any. So, the big question is, what is this gonna cost? Information from other DPW projects show that the town's cost for a grader and operator is under $100 an hour. Since Streeter Road is a small eight-tenths of a mile road, it takes about six hours to grade the full length of the road. That's approximately $1,200 a year. Some occasional gravel will also be needed, and snow plowing is currently subcontracted out at $3,800 per year. This expense can be reduced once Streeter Road becomes a public road and the town is able to use its own equipment to plow. In addition, once Streeter Road becomes public, the town will receive additional Chapter Ninety funds from the state for road maintenance. At the current set rates, this will bring in an extra $3,200 a year that can be used towards the maintenance of Streeter Road. Just the added Chapter Ninety funds means that the town of Hubbardston will incur little to no expense for adding Streeter Road to its list of public ways. Some may wonder if the road is in need of any upgrades, and the answer is no. The Planning Board voted unanimously to waive any changes to the current condition based on historical evidence, and because the road already meets the same standards that are seen throughout town. Some have asked if it needs a guardrail in the area of the pond. Again, no. Grimes Road, Brigham Road, Old Westminster Road, and High Bridge Road, just to name a few, are all public ways, all have sections of road where ponds are, and there's no guardrails. So, once again, Streeter Road meets all the same standards that currently exist in other roads throughout the town of Hubbardston. The residents who are hoping to have their towns, their roads repaired in the next five years by way of Chapter Ninety funds, or by the affirmative vote for the tax override before us, understand that we are all in this together. The residents of Streeter Road are simply asking that since our private road is actually used as a public thoroughfare, and it's well-traveled on by the general public, we'd like to receive the same benefits from our tax dollars that other people do. So, please vote yes on Article twenty-five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyone else who'd care to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Gail Abiyaksha, one twenty-one Berry Road. And, I recommend that you vote yes on Article twenty-five. This is an opportunity to be a community and take care of each other.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, elected officials, and everyone else in this room tonight. My name's Peter Russell. I live at twenty Streeter Road, along with my wife. I too want to thank the Planning Board, the members, past and present, for their support of making Streeter Road a public way. Throughout the statutory hearings, throughout the statutory hearings, going back to early nineteen, 2018, the Planning Board has, has listened attentively to all the Hubbardston residents and their experts who have testified before them. The Planning Board viewed this process from the perspective of the zoning bylaws, and after several public hearings, listened to the pros and cons, eventually voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Streeter Road becomes a public way, in its as-is condition. The decision by the Planning Board included a full review of ZOK's surveying Streeter Road end-to-end, and all the butters contributing to the fund at the cost of $7,000. I also want to recognize and thank the Selectmen, who similarly have held multiple public hearings, allowing anyone interested to present their opinions and to ask any questions about Streeter Road. Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to select and to support the passage of this article. The Finance Committee also recommends approval, suggesting that Streeter Road becoming a public way will not adversely affect the town financially. So, to summarize, Streeter Road's been under the microscope for more than eighteen months. Its history, its public usage, its current condition, and the cost have all been out in the open, and been fully disclosed at multiple public hearings. This has all been in the newspapers multiple times and available on YouTube for anyone who hasn't been able to attend the public hearings. The individuals elected by the townspeople have done their jobs responsibly and thoroughly, and unanimously across the board have all voted to make public Streeter Road, once and for all, a public way. So, I ask all of you tonight as well, as has Mrs. Reed, to recognize all that has transpired throughout this process, and to vote yes in favor of article, of this article, just as your Planning Board, and just as your Finance Committee, and just as your Board of Selectmen have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Thank you, Mr. Russell. The Chair omitted that there is a recommendation by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for this article. Anyone else who would like to speak to the article? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Begley. I live at the corner of Street Road with Grimes Road. Our family has lived on the corner of Street Road with Grimes Road for forty-two years. We own three hundred and ninety feet along Street Road, including half of the way, the fee interest in the road. In nineteen seventy-seven, I applied for a building permit to build on Street Road. This was the best building site for our house, but the Planning Board denied me a permit to build on Street Road because it was private. Since the best building site for our house was close to the Street Road, we still built there. Our house faces Street Road and is a hundred and forty feet away versus three hundred feet from Grimes Road. This process of making Street Road public moved forward without our knowledge because at many of the Planning Board and Selectmen's meetings, one of the Street Road residents stated that making Street Road public did not involve us. We did not own the land abutting the road. When in fact, she and many of the residents were aware that we did because the town's administrator, Anita Shipers, had sent a letter dated December twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen, to all the residents of Street Road stating that Town Council had reviewed our title search and agreed with us that we owned to the traveled way. At the Planning Board Acceptance Meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we were told that the road was going to be moved over. At the Selectmen's Meeting on March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we were asked what we wanted. We stated we wanted an easement for the purpose of snow plowing, road grading, drainage, utilities, and/or other related purposes, so that we would not incur any more property damages. When the layout plan was approved by the Selectmen on April twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, it provided neither to us. The travel way was not moved over, and we were not provided with any easement for snow plowing, road grading, drainage, utilities, and/or other related purposes. I hope that you, as voters, have reviewed the Street Road layout plans that are on the town warrant for a vote tonight. If you review the design layout of the road for Article twenty-five submitted by the Board of Selectmen, you will see that all the residents of the road have been provided with an easement for the purpose of snow plowing, road grading, drainage, utilities, and/or other related purposes between their private property line and the travel way except us. So far, my research has found that all of the other public roads in town have easements between the travel way and residents' property lines. With the layout of Street Road, only us have been singled out not to be provided with an easement. This causes us a hardship. Not only does it devalue the value of our property, but it sets us up to have continued property damage. Moderator, I would like to pass around a handout. If I may tell you what it is, and I can show it to you?
Yes, please.
The first page of the handout shows the layout plan for this article, so everyone's aware of what it is. It shows that all the other abudders have been provided with an easement between their private property and the travel way except us. The second page is a photo taken on September seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen by the Hubbardston Police Department, showing my husband pointing to one of our surveyed property bounds. It appears that the property bound is in the traveled way, but it is not. The travel way has encroached into our private property by the bulldozing, snow plowing, and grading of the way. The third is a photo showing part of a twenty-foot-by-two-hundred-foot area of clear cutting to our private property done by us, working with the town on June eighteenth, two thousand and ten, clear cutting our property. The utility pole in the picture is on our private property. May I, may I pass out?
How, no, I, the-
I only have-
The Chair does not want you to pass out.
Oh, yeah, no, I can't-
But, no, no, you can, just don't. What I was going to say is, how many copies do you have?
I have six copies. I figured I'd just pass out three to each side, and people can just look through them and go through them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion to the motion?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Glant, yes.
I guess I would just like to say, to reiterate, that the Planning Board and Select Board unanimously voted to support this article. You can, you can see that there's obviously some differing opinions, and there were many meetings that we were present on, and we, and Town Council as well was, was part of the vetting process. So we think we went through a very thorough analysis of both sides of the situation and therefore recommend it.
Thank you, Mr. Glant. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I am Donna Russell from twenty Street Road. From my, oh, sure, from my knowledge at this point, there have been no easements granted or given to the town or taken by the town for any of the residents of Street Road because at this point in time, that would be a future event. So for clarification, I believe that that statement is not telling how the process works. Also, the fact that Street Road has been described by Mrs. Reed, and it's true that it is the only road that is private in town that leads from one public road to another, the road is already burdened by a supposed easement because it's been being used for over a hundred years for public use. So the fact that the road is already burdened by this use, and it will stay a gravel road, means that the use of it will not change. So the use of it for the individual who is opposed will also not change. There are presently, we've been here since two thousand and four, and to my recollection, I do walk the road a lot, I have no knowledge of any clear cutting of trees going on, on Street Road. It's a very wooded area with trees almost right up to the traveled way, and at the end of the road that Mrs. Begley owns, there are good-sized boulders that have been there right at the edge of the traveled way for a good many years. So there has been no damage to the boulders. They have stayed there forever. So it's very puzzling to me and confusing as to what is being described as damage and clear cutting. The road is being used the way it's been for over a hundred years, and that's all we want it to be, is continue to be used in the same way, but just be relieved of the responsibility of having to foot thousands of dollars every year that the Street Road residents have had to undertake just to keep it available, so the town will plow it for us in the winter. So we and everyone else has access to oil trucks, emergency equipment, fire equipment, and the town also has access to the fire hydrant that is there already, which the town does have an easement to use that fire hydrant already. It's been there for many years.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else to speak to the motion for the first time? Anyone else who would like to speak to the motion for the first time? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lisa Nathan. I live at thirty-two Street Road. I've been there since nineteen ninety-five. We have been paying X amount of money every year to maintain our road. Do you contribute to that?
No, I'm sorry, you can't ask a direct question.
Well, it's, it's being funded by the twenty-four people who have, who live on this road. My mother-in-law is sitting in the audience. She's on oxygen. She has many medical needs, and I think that the road being maintained by the town keeps all of our residents safe on this road. It's also used by Westminster as it's the last road in town, so it's not just used by Hubbardston residents, but also Westminster residents. But more importantly, we need to be safe on our road. And when there's, there's divots that are nine and ten inches deep, and, you know, I'm out there with my wheelbarrow trying to fill it with dirt because I feel like we need to be safe. It's not, it's not fair to me, as a woman that was doing this when I was four months pregnant, shoveling stones into a hole to keep our residents safe. I just, I don't think it's right. It's not right, when I was pregnant also, that I would have contractions going down my road because it was in such disrepair. So I ask that, please help us out and get this passed. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else to speak to the motion for the first time? Sir. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Ed Tenoski. I live at the Connaught lot of Grimes Road and Street Road with my wife Sharon and my daughter Michaela. We own about three hundred and ninety-five feet along our land along the Street Road line. In, in February nineteen, in February of nineteen thirteen, two thousand and thirteen, we had an eleven-page title search done along our land of Street Road describing our land. That was because of a harassment that we received from some of the residents of Street Road. In September of two thousand and fourteen, we had our land surveyed along Street Road by our surveyor. There were seven points, steel pins, put in along the property line, Street Road. The plan of the survey was recorded in the Registry of Deeds. On September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, the DPW graded Street Road along our property, depositing a two-foot-wide, ten-inch-high winrow of asphalt grindings covering all of our boundary points and pulling one of the boundary points out, which had to be reset. If Street Road becomes public and the town maintains it, the town will be responsible to replace any of these points if destroyed or removed by winter plowing and grading of the road along our property line by a surveyor. This could all have been prevented if the road was moved away from our land and the property would be leaving a buffer zone between our land and the traveled way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone to speak to the motion for the first time? Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, lady in the back.
Michelle Amati, number twenty-nine, Street Road. I didn't want to speak, but- A little closer? I didn't want to speak, but I'm just here to simply say to anyone who has concerns about this, that what are we all here for today? It's to take care of one another in a fiscally responsible way. There's twenty-five worthy families that pay the same tax rate as everyone else on Street Road, and this is a fiscally neutral undertaking. The town's going to take in enough money to cover what they always historically did for us, and that's all that we're asking. We need to be relieved of the burden because twenty-five individual families can't take care of one eight-tenth, you know, mile stretch of road, and, because we can't coordinate it. Yet we have a great highway department, and the bottom line is, all of our town roads need work, and we want to take care of one another, and I'm just here to ask you to help us. We all want to support you as well in your endeavors, and I think this is a very positive thing. All of our town fathers have already weighed in, and they're in support of this, so please help us with your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, first time? First time? I'm going to alternate at this point, okay? I'll recognize you next. Thank you.
To Mrs. Russell's comment about the clear cutting, it's in a photo that's circulating around. You can look at the packet. We have had incurred a lot of property damage due there, due there's no buffer zone on this property. And like I said, we're the only people that have been admitted not to have one in this layout plan. And I'm going to tell you some instances of the property damage. After the town voted in nineteen seventy-eight to snow plow private ways, the town removed a ten-foot to fifteen-foot section of our stone wall along Grimes Road, which was our property bound. And Grimes Road is a scenic road, and I believe that is illegal. Okay? At this town, the town also removed a fifteen, fifteen-inch maple tree on our property so they could snow plow Street Road. In nineteen ninety-five, the town tree warden worked with Mass Electric to clear cut a hundred-foot-by-twelve-foot area of our private property. The United States Postal Service poured an approximate five-foot-by-four-foot concrete slab on our private property so they could place a bank of mailboxes to service the residents of Street Road. On June eighteenth, two thousand and ten, again, the tree warden worked with a silent tree expert to trim trees around the utility lines. They entered into our private property without permission or notification and cut down fifty-five of our trees, completely clear cutting a five-foot to twenty-foot for two hundred and fifty-foot section. The utility pole that is on that handout is going, that utility pole is on our private
Ma'am, the Chair just has to remind you, under Section fifteen of the general bylaws, you have to limit your remarks to the question before us. So if you can just tighten them up as far as, as far as your focus.
What do you, what do you mean by that?
Well, the focus is accepting the layout of Street Road as a public way and the location depicted on the plan entitled.
But my sole purpose of my commentary here is to discuss that we were not, we were admitted from having this, this easement for all these things, and I want people to say, people say we don't have any property damage, but we, but we have. Like my husband stated, the grading of the road, the ripping. Matter of fact, I just went out the other day and found one of our intermediate survey points ripped out that was probably done by the snow plowing this past winter. So could I make a motion that I can finish what I have to say?
No.
I don't know.
No, no motion is, is needed at this time.
So I only have, like, one minute left.
One minute, go ahead.
Okay. Fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars was the estimate for nursery stock to replant the area that was clear cut. Okay? And I replanted it for eight, four thousand dollars. In September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, the residents of Street Road hired a contractor who bulldozed our property and put down asphalt grindings. The man that does the snow plowing for Street Road plowed down a tree that I planted at a cost of a hundred and twenty. That happened on March first, two thousand and thirteen. June fifth, two thousand and thirteen, the residents of Street Road hired a contractor whom bulldozed our property. That's on the, on the thing. On June third, two thousand and nineteen, I just said that, I found an intermediate survey part that was pulled out along the partners. Ever since we have moved here, we have had continuous damage to our property due to the maintenance of the road. This article devaluates our property and sets us up for future property damage. At this time, only at this time, we ask that you do not support Article twenty-five and thirty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone who wants to speak to the motion for the first time?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I motion that you call the question.
Okay. Would you mind tilting the microphone? Excuse me, just giving your name and address, please.
Christopher Monroe from Grimes Road. And, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion that you call the question.
Previous question has been called. Is there a second? All in favor of the motion, call previous question and debate. Please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed? One, two, one, two, three. One, two, one, two, three. Opposed? No, I'm sorry. One, two, three. One, two. To close debate? One. Those opposed to close the debate? One, two, three. Question is called. Question before... Four? Four, thank you. Question before the meeting is the approval of Article twenty-five. Again, requires a two-thirds vote. At this point, I'm going to ask the counters to please be ready when I call for the affirmative. Sixty-one. Thank you. Please lower your cards. The side to the chairs left, you can lower your card, sir. Did you get the front?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Those opposed? Those opposed to the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may lower your cards. The result of the vote is as follows. One hundred and twenty-four in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and the article passes. Article twenty-six. Mr. Gerard moves that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen pursuant to General Law Chapter Thirty-B, Section twelve, to enter into a five-year contract with Lance Lane for the haying of the Mount Jefferson Recreation Area. Motion made by Mr. Gerard. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Stoudt. Yes, Stoudt, thank you. Is, and this has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen and by the Finance Committee, is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Yes, sir. Again, your name and address, please.
Bob Hatch, Root Road. I'm chairman of the Open Space Committee. We oversee the fields up at Mount Jefferson. Just a point of explanation on this. This is just a license that gets awarded every five years. It brings in approximately three thousand dollars a year to the town to be spent on maintenance of our open space lands. So that's what this is about.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion as far as the article? All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the article is approved unanimously. Article twenty-seven. Mr. Robinson moves that the town vote to amend the Hubbardston zoning bylaw, Article seven, special permits, Section seven point six, as printed in the warrant. This will require a two-thirds vote. It is recommended by the Finance Committee. The Board of Selectmen does not recommend. Do I hear a second? And there is a second? Sir, if you could give us your name for the record. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Tom Robinson, five Brigham Street. I'm also the chairman of the Planning Board. This motion is put before the voters. It was submitted to the Select Board on April first, and they moved through a process by the twenty-fourth of April. The Planning Board had copies of all the necessary documents that had been reviewed by the Select Board, Town Administrator, KP Law, and the Town Clerk. Shortly after that, we had a May meeting, May first, Planning Board meeting, in which it was announced that we'd have a May fourteenth public hearing. And of course, public hearing is when all of you people get a chance to come and express your thoughts about this. There was some public in attendance. Two people in a letter were for it, and two people were not in favor of it, and one person abstained. The Planning Board then voted not in favor of it and offered this report. May twenty-eighth, the Town of Hubbardston Town Meeting, Town of Hubbardston Planning Board referenced the warrant Article twenty-seven. Now, twenty-seven and twenty-eight are kind of hooked together, so we're going to have to talk about that in a minute. On May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Town of Hubbardston Planning Board, at a properly posted public hearing, discussed warrant Articles twenty-seven, which concerns proposed changes to the town of Hubbardston's zoning bylaw, Article seven, special permits, Section seven point six, associate member. During that meeting, the following motion was made to not support the bylaw change. The motion was carried by a quorum of the Planning Board, three in favor, two opposed. As required by Massachusetts General Law, Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, the Planning Board submits this report with the decision to not recommend warrant Article twenty-seven. Respectfully, Alice Livdahl, who served as the temporary chair for that one meeting, I stepped away from the chairmanship to be unbiased. So as I said, the process was properly followed, and the reason that process was taken by myself was to make sure that it got before this body. In town, we have the, of course, the residents. You become a resident by signing these annual census, and among the residents, there are registered voters, and among the registered voters, there are elected officials. And I'm not very good at the slideshow thing, so I printed up my own large version of the town bylaw. This is the general bylaw. You can see even from the back, you can see it's broken into three sections, and this is the town officers and elections or appointment saying. The top is all the elected officials, which of course, as I explained, come from registered voters, residents who are registered voters. The next category is officers to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen from among the residents of the town, and that's Board of Appeals and Council on Aging and Conservation Commission. That's perfect. Top is good. This is good. Down at the bottom here, we find officers to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and it doesn't say from the residents of the town. It can be for anybody, and it's appropriate in many cases. For instance, if we hire a fire chief, appoint a fire chief, or appoint a police chief, or a town administrator, we want to go outside the town to get the best talent, and I think that's perfectly appropriate. But on this list also is the Planning Board Associate Member of the town per zoning bylaw seven point six. And if this law stays the way it is, then the appointment of this Planning Board Associate Member could be from anywhere, and I find that unacceptable, and I hope you can agree with me. The passing of the Article twenty-seven will make sure that the Planning Board Associate Member is appointed from among the residents of the town. The Planning Board... It will also make the Planning Board answerable to you, the voters, and not to any other board that tries to impose its will on the Planning Board. I should also mention that the Planning Board Associate Member is appointed from among the residents of the town. If you're a resident of the town, you can't claim to be a resident of some other town. And the third point is that the Planning Board is... Would then be in full... Or the bylaws would then be in full conformance with the Massachusetts State Law, Forty-A, Section nine, special permits, which is pretty complex, but it authorizes the generation or the position of a associate member. One last point is, the Planning Board's a five-member board, and special permits require a supermajority, sixty-six percent, two-thirds, and that means that four have to vote favorably. If one happens to step away from the Planning Board for any reason, they're sick that night, and you are voting on a special permit, the state authorizes you to name this associate member to come in and take their place, take the place of the absent person. I think that if an associate member comes in and acts like a Planning Board member who is an elected person, it should not come from any place other than the town. So that's the main point. The other points in the bylaw are kind of wording changes, and if you were successful and we vote in favor of the first article, then we have to proceed to the second article, which simply strikes what I think was a mistake to include the Planning Board in this list.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. One article at a time. Right now...
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. For the record, Mr. Robinson reported that the Planning Board did meet and that there was a vote of no recommendation on the proposal. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Over here again, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Glenn.
I just wanted to... I guess this will be the third time we say this out loud, but just to reiterate that the... You know, Mr. Robinson submitted this as an individual, as he stated, and the Planning Board voted not to recommend this. The Select Board voted not to recommend this, and the real reason is that we follow the letter of the way the current bylaw is written is because a recommended individual to us was one that had recently been voted out of the Planning Board, and so we felt the will of the town was not being fulfilled with that operation. So we just think it should stay the same as it is for checks and balances and all that stuff. So I guess that was just my sort of two cents.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, it's Alicia Muck, Sixth Worcester Road, and I'd just like to say that every other committee in town or somebody who is not voted in, I believe, is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and I feel that by making this position to be basically appointed from within a committee would be removing checks and balances that are already in place for the rest of those non-elected volunteers in town.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Franz Schweiger, sixty-five Healdville Road, here in Hubbardston. And by the way, I have been a resident in Hubbardston for the last twenty years, if there's any doubt. I would like to remind everybody that the law has been in place for a number of years, and it has worked well. As a matter of fact, in two thousand and eighteen was the first time that the Select Board overrode the Planning Board's decision. Mr. Galanta very clearly stated why. When I look at this here, that's the perfect checks and balances, and it works. Why can I say so? Because I am the appointed associate member. The amendment, as it has been presented in the warrant... The amendment, as it has been presented in the warrant this evening, is an attempt to drive a divide between the Planning Board and the Select Board. There is a sensible way, if so desired, to have the nominations basically followed by appointments by the Planning Board and the Select Board, and it's called communication, which is something that has not occurred very clearly and very fluidly over the last several years. Mind you that, as it was clearly stated earlier, a majority of the individuals in the Planning Board voted against this amendment. There's one good item, and I do agree with it, that if it stood alone by itself, makes perfect sense, and that's the requirement to have the associate member be filled by a resident of the town. Lamentably, the wording and the extent of the changes that have been requested are weighing down this one article, and as a result of that, I ask that you kindly consider this as a amendment that is not because of the residency requirement, but because there is a divide that wants to be created between the Planning Board and the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to this motion? Anyone else to speak to this motion for the first time? In that case, Mr. Robinson, go ahead.
The concept of checks and balances is understood. There's also a concept called separation of powers. These things are always in balance. The Planning Board, being a five-member elected board, should be able to make its own standalone decisions. It should not have the will of a separate elected board imposed on it. We really need independence. I really don't want, or I don't think it's appropriate, to have the voters elect the Select Board to do something, or any board, Board of Health, Concom, have their will imposed on another board. I don't hear this happening in town at all. I don't hear where the Board of Health, an elected board, has things imposed on it by a separate elected board. So I think the separation of powers argument is just as powerful. You are the voters. You should control what happens, not inter-board discussions.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Stoudt.
So I just want to remind everybody, the way the current bylaws and charter are written and have been for a long time, is that if there's an opening on a board, Finance Committee, which is elected, Board of Health, the Select Board is the appointing authority for that open position until the next election, so that is not a foreign concept in this town.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to the motion for the first time? Sir?
Thank you. And as a reminder, we have at this point in time a member in the Planning Board by the name of Alice Livdahl. Alice Livdahl indeed was appointed by the Select Board to be the member that replaced the prior person who actually resigned. Not only has she done an excellent job, but she has actually brought some good balance to this particular board, and so as a result of good work that is being done also by the Select Board, I think that we can get good appointments. A nomination does not necessarily mean that it cannot be appointed. This is not an adversarial relationship, and therefore, the communication that needs to exist between the Select Board and the Planning Board, and vice versa, needs to be in place, and therefore, I do not believe that this particular article is being put together in goodwill.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, and the chair will ask the counters, because this will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Eight. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card. Forty-seven, thank you. Forty-nine, thank you. There are fourteen in the affirmative, ninety-six in the negative, and the article fails. Article twenty-eight, Mr. Robinson moves that the town vote to amend the Hubbardston General Bylaws, Chapter Three, Vacancies and Appointments, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Robinson, the Chair would like to ask, would you like to pass over Article twenty-eight? Yes, motion made, uh, Mr. Robinson moves, uh, to pass over Article twenty-eight, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hadad, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to pass over, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the vote is unanimous, thank you, Article twenty-eight is passed over. Article twenty-nine, Mr. Hadad moves that the vote, that the town vote to amend, Chapter Thirty-One, Section Two of the Hubbardston General Bylaws by inserting a new Section Two Point Six as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the following, in the second paragraph of the text as printed in the warrant, delete the references to City Council, where it appears on lines two through three and on line four. Motion by Mr. Hadad, is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Stoudt, thank you, um, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the purposes of discussion, if there is someone who would like to speak to the motion, the Chair recognizes the gentle lady.
Hi, Catherine Hansgate, Williamsville Road, Chairman of the Board, uh, excuse me, Board of Health and Ag Commission, um...
Yep, tilt it.
Sorry, uh, Chairman of the Ag Commission, um, in two thousand eighteen, the Massachusetts Legislature amended the Right to Farm bylaw, and, um, we are just adding this to our Right to Farm bylaw, uh, to be compliant with the state. The details that you see before you gives the individual Ag Commission in a town the right to, um, have land, farmlands, farmland donated to them, or to purchase farmland, should they have a grant or whatever, uh, in order to keep farmland as farmland. Massachusetts is losing many, many acres every day, and, um, this was their, um, method to allow towns to have more power in preserving farmland, and I wanna thank you for all that you have done in supporting the Right to Farm bylaw that we have currently, and this just adds, uh, what the state has already said we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your card. Thank you, those opposed, please raise your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article thirty, Ms. Reed moves to pass over this article, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Galant, um, all in favor, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Thank you, those opposed, please raise your card. And the motion passes unanimously. Article thirty-one, Ms. Reed moves that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for Special Legislation entitled an Act Relative to Private Road Maintenance as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Williams, seconded, um, under discussion, is there anyone who would like to speak to this motion? Yes. Absolutely friendly amendment by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
And this would be an amendment to Article thirty-one, um, that the motion under Article thirty-one be amended by inserting a new Section Four as follows, Section Four, the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to this bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition. Does anyone need me to read that again?
The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to this bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, is that correct, Mr. Galant?
That's correct.
Okay, so, motion made by Mr. Galant to amend the article, is there a second? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, thank you, seconded by Mr. Williams, under discussion.
Mr. Moderator, just, just for purposes of explaining the friendly amendment, anytime we submit special legislation to the General Court, there is the risk that they will only approve it exactly as it's been voted on by town meeting, so adding this language, it's, it's fairly standard language that we use throughout the state, that we ask permission that in the event that there is a comma that turns out out of place, or there's something that is misspelled, that both the General Court and the Selectmen could approve those types of editorial changes to the bill, so that they could actually be approved by the legislature as opposed to being rejected and sent back to town meeting for voting again.
Thank you. Any questions on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your card. Thank you, those opposed, please raise your card. There is one opposed, thank you, uh, and the amendment passes, now on the article as amended, correct, Town Council? Any discussion of the article as amended? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. There is one opposed, thank you, and the article as amended passes. All right, uh, and ladies and gentlemen, this, uh, sums up, uh, this...
Mr. Moderator, point of information?
Yes, yes, sir, state your point of information.
Yes, Vincent Ritchie, one Ed Clark wrote, "My question is, and I apologize because I, I don't have my hearing faculties as well as I did, but at the beginning of the evening, were there any mention of Mr. Leonard, the, our present town moderator, in the form of his leaving?" Okay, thank you, and therefore, I would like to say thank you for stepping in tonight, landslide, you did a great job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
But I, but I would also like to say that this town and this town meeting this evening has to make mention that Ed Leonard, who has served this town so well over the years, needs to have some type of recognition for his many, I would say probably close to twenty-five years as moderator, I served with Ed on the school committee when he was Chairman of the Quabon Regional School Committee, and for many evenings here before you, we also had wonderful discussions, Ed did a great job, I think we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge his contributions to the town of Hubbardston, and I would there also ask us all to give us a big hand, give him a big hand this evening in his absence, thank you very much.
Thank you. At, uh, at this, at this point, uh, for the, for the, at this point for the record, ladies and gentlemen, um, the Chair will recognize a motion by Mr. Ritchie, uh, seconded by the entire body, uh, led by Mr. Galant, uh, Mr. Giroux, and many others recognizing the contributions of Mr. Leonard. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please, uh, you know what, we're going to do this on a voice vote, um, there we go, all in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion is approved, ladies and gentlemen, I did come prepared the symbol of the, the freedom of people to debate freely, that's what town meeting is all about, at this point, at ten-twenty-five, the Chair declares the meeting adjourned.